Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
We're here to interview Craig Clark from Austin, Minnesota. Craig, you want to start by telling us a little bit about yourself?
Can I make this work? Is that the first test? See if I can operate a chair?
Yeah. If you can get comfortable in that chair, there you go.
Well, this might be impossible. Thank you. Well, thank you for having me. Yes, Craig Clark. I'm administrator in city of Austin. Twenty-six thousand population. Been there about ten and a half years. Prior to that was in Worthington, not too far from your neck of the woods here. Prior to that, eastern Wisconsin. A stint at the state legislature in the Minnesota House of Representatives. Went out and worked for a couple of congressmen in Washington, DC. I'm assuming that might give me some unique experience of multi-levels of government. As we have projects that come through the city, many of those involve both state and federal funds. They have in Austin, and I'm sure that's the case here in Sioux City. Think that experience has been rewarding, but both impactful. That's something I can bring to help your city move forward. Wife and three children. My oldest is Garrett. He's down at Iowa State. He's doing IT. He also is in the Air National Guard. We're proud of him for that. He does cybersecurity for them there. My next son Peyton, he's going to University of Minnesota Mankato. And my youngest daughter is a senior at Austin High this next fall. Let's see, what else can I tell you about myself? Free time, which there isn't much of it, other than work, but also enjoy history. I like going antiquing and discovering things that way. So that's kind of me in a nutshell.
We have questions, and I'll reverse the order today and let Dan go first, that we will ask you. And then we'll give you a chance to ask us some questions. And then we'll give the public a chance to ask some questions. They'll turn theirs in to the back table if they have any. But go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Hi, Craig. Thank you for that background, and thank you for making the application. I must tell you that I'm delighted that you're one of the three finalists that we're visiting with. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Your resume is very impressive. The question I have, I'm going to start with number five. We're going to hop around on these.
Okay, that's fine.
If, please share with us how you prefer that the members of the city council interact with the department directors and other senior staff.
Yeah, I really, and we talked about this with the department heads, really the process to work through the administrator. You know, when I meet with a constituent or what have you, developer, it's important for me to understand all the council members and mayor's viewpoint on things. And I can't fully appreciate that if I'm not kept in the loop on things. And we're not talking about trivial matters, but we're talking about more substantive things. But, you know, if a council member has questions about a dilapidated property or something like that, being in the loop and knowing about that helps inform my decision when we come up with policy discussions or actual implementation of things of, you know, how, how does council see how aggressive we want to be for that housing code violation? Do they want us to try to work with constituents? Or is it, hey, you have a certain amount of time and you have to fix it, and we expect it to be fixed? I mean, we, we take a pragmatic approach, but that, again, is all informed by my elected officials and knowing what's important to them and how, how that translates. So being inclusive of that is really important, and that both works up and down the food chain. If staff, you know, as we talked about with the department heads, if staff kind of enjoys sort of taking things out of, out of order, that can be both, you know, helpful in some regards, but, and everybody always has the best of intentions. No one's trying to sabotage anything. I recognize that. But sometimes the issue would be sort of taking us off track. And then, of course, council only has authority as a collective majority body. So that's important to remember, so we're not doing individual tasks ordered by council member, what have you. But again, staff has to recognize that council has the decision to make the 50,000-foot questions. So just as much as we like to ask council to respect that, we also have to, from a staff perspective, respect what questions and answers that council's role is. So I guess I'm strong on both putting that in practice as we work forward. And, and I think it really is the best, sort of the best practices model that we want to try to achieve. Do we, do we achieve it every, all the time? No, certainly not. But we certainly want that to be our objective, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
Craig, I really appreciate the opportunity to meet you and to have you here. I will tell you that I, I feel that this process is extraordinarily formal.
Yeah.
And our hands are pretty much tied when it comes to Supreme Court cases and how we're able to, to hold these.
Yeah.
But I really appreciate you being here and going through this process. I was excited to look over your resume, and I'm looking forward to getting you, to know you here.
Yeah.
In this session. But as the mayor said, it's kind of a formal process where we have a list of twenty-some questions, and we'll bounce through some of them and just try to glean as much as we can about you and your leadership.
Yeah.
And what you would bring to the community.
You bet.
And so with that, I wanted to start, I'm going to start with number three. Question number three, which really, for me, I think focuses on something that in today's day and age, we've gotten accustomed to kind of thinking about. And it's in terms of kind of short-term versus long-term. And so if you were selected for this position, where would your focus be during those first ninety days?
Yeah.
And what specific objectives would you hope to accomplish during that time period?
Besides figuring out where the bathroom is?
Exactly.
The coffee pot things, those things? Absolutely.
The important stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'd really feel passionately, I mean, I'm called to public service. You know, it's not something, it's not just a job to me. It's something that you kind of, you have to throw your whole self into it, serving a community, serving your friends and neighbors. You really have to give it your all. So that, that's what I would do in really immersing myself into working, you know, meeting with stakeholders, meeting with constituents, meeting with departments, going out and meeting in departments. I could show you a picture of me working down at the wastewater treatment plant by working alongside for a day some of the folks down at the wastewater treatment plant. Not, not glamorous, but it is a very important job for the city. Our community really relies on that. And if you can't know those things, now, do I spend every day out in the departments? Probably not. But at the same token, trying to get some sense of what's going on in the front lines for the city and just really spending even ninety days to assume that I could do that for a community the size of Sioux City would be impossible. But really immersing myself into the community is really what I would spend my time trying to do. You know, we talked with some of the department heads about ideas for this or ideas for that. While I brought different initiatives forward at the communities I've worked at before, those may not work for Sioux City. They may work for Sioux City, but you don't know that until you have gone through that process, work with the public, understand what the limitations are and the reality on the ground. So just really that immersion into the community, I think, would be first ninety days plus.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
Hi, Craig.
Hi.
Haven't met yet.
Yes.
I wasn't late, but I was under the wire. My name's Julie Shaner.
Nice to meet you.
I'm on my second term as city council. I have two and a half more years to serve before I decide if I want to run for third.
Great, thanks for your service.
Yes. What I want to ask about is you've been here a short time, and based on what you've seen and what you've already learned from those who you've already spoken with, what do you believe are the community's most important assets? And what would you suggest has already become obvious to you about our, any limitations? That is number ten, I'm sorry.
Most important asset? Most important asset without question is the staff. We can't do the job that we need to deliver for the community without having competent and well-compensated staff. It always is a, is a difficult equation. Nobody likes taxes, but if we want to have the best and competent staff, we have to pay them accordingly to be able to deliver efficient services to our taxpayers. And at the end of the day, that's really the best financial decision for, for the city, to have longevity in that experience that plays out on a daily basis. So our staff is, is number one in that equation. Certainly capital equipment of a VAC truck. We talked about that. The finance director mentioned a new VAC truck is necessitated for the city, and those don't come cheap. We had a million-six ladder truck for our fire department in Austin. Those things come at a very significant expense. Our wastewater plant, while nowhere near, I couldn't believe that your wastewater plant was that expensive, but ours is a hundred and five million. I thought that was a big number, but you guys really took it to the, took it to the hoops on that one.
Read your cover letter, I saw that.
Yeah.
And I'm like, what's he going to think when he hears about?
Yeah, right. I was like, wow. So that, that's, those are assets. You know, looking, you know, as anyone's looking to move to a new community, certainly where you might live. So I, I took a look at that and doing the sort of street view on some of the properties that kind of piqued my interest, just to sort of shock test it and see like, what would it, what would it look like? And then just driving around the community too, the infrastructure needs, I think, seem to be fairly apparent, that there's a lot of, lot of projects out there. And I've been around long enough to know that those don't come cheap. But, you know, when we're talking about basic infrastructure, if you neglect those expenses, they only get more expensive in the future. And the reality is, you know, repairing a road is much cheaper than full reconstruction, right? That's just a basic engineering principle. So if we're not able to keep up on that, it is going to cost us both, both in the inflationary future costs and, and not doing it at the most efficient time when, when we can repair those things. It's difficult, I, you know, some of them ask, why am I interested in Sioux City? You know, the commitment to quality of life things? I mean, holy cow. I mean, almost, the list of, of different things that you guys have for amenities, where people are making choices where to live before they make choices where to work, having those amenities, I mean, hats off to you all for putting that commitment forward and, and putting those resources in play. That's a great testament. But, you know, that's always the tug and the pull of things, of how do you fund those things and the needed infrastructure? So I'd say that's, I think that's how I'd approach it. And of course, that's, that's me at a casual coming in, looking from afar. So I don't profess to know all the answers.
Mr. Clark, thank you for being here. I'm Matt O'Kane. And I just have to give you a little bit of a shout out. I have been driving to and from the Twin Cities to see my brother for about the past twenty-six years. And the, the years when you served in Worthington, there, I have seen great improvement in that community. One thing I will say though is I am surprised that you left for Wisconsin and they allowed you back in Minnesota after.
Yeah, that was kind of, yeah. Well, I use the Iowa card since I'm originally from Iowa.
Yeah, there you go.
Kind of a free agent.
I didn't know where I was going.
Yeah, I was a free agent.
Just passed the wrong state line. There you go.
Right.
So my question for you is going to be number twelve on the list here. If you felt strongly that a majority of the council was heading down a path that, that would be detrimental to the city?
Sure.
Have, have you ever encountered a situation like that? And how would you handle that situation?
Yeah, yeah, this is always an interesting question. I think some, some outside folks think that the manager's job is to stand in front of the train and at all costs prevent, prevent this. You know, there's this little thing called democracy that, you know, I have a high fidelity to my elected officials and my graduate degree. Some of my counterparts, I don't mean to speak negatively on them, but, you know, they felt like they, they've got the answer and, and that sort of thing. I really, I guess, push back on that. Councils can make the right decision, they can make a wrong decision, they can make an ill-informed decision. I mean, they can make a lot of basis for their decisions. They, you know, among those can be what I feel is a wrong decision or staff's recommendation. But at the end of the day, and that's what I touched on earlier, that 50,000-foot of where we're hoping council operates is to make, that, that is your call. Is it a roundabout? Is it a stoplight? We might have a recommendation from staff. And mayor, you might have an opinion on roundabouts or not that I, that I noticed.
I think you must have done a little research to know that.
It's almost as if he's watching the meetings.
I hate him in Worthington and I hate him in Sioux City, but go ahead with your tour.
I sensed as much, I sensed as much. But at the end of the day, it's what a majority of the council decides, right? And we, we move forward with that, right, wrong, or indifferent. We'll suffer, we'll suffer or gain the, the benefit of that one way or the other. So, and it does, most, most things aren't necessarily ineligible for course correction, but, you know, another example I, of the, I watched with you all is the Parklet discussion, right? I mean, what, what's that going to do to your parking budget, right? You want staff to be able to feel free to come forward and share those things, even though it might not be the easiest thing to do. But that's what we are, you know, here to do, is to raise those issues so that you have as much information as you can to make that final determination, and then we, we move forward with that from there. Yeah.
I have a question that's not on here because I go to the Mayo Clinic on a annual basis normally, whether I want to or not. And Austin is one of my stopping spots.
Okay.
First of all, I'll ask you, is that nice barbecue place still downtown or not?
It is. Please, please come back and patronize us.
Well, it's a long ways off the interstate.
It is a little bit of a haul, but it's worth it, it's worth it.
But your mall seems to be similar to ours in that it's not prospering.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you, do you have any plans for that mall?
Actually, we do. I'll invite you back, mayor, if, if, well, that's of course if I don't come here, but the mall.
We can go to the, I'll buy at the barbecue place.
Yeah, there we go, there we go. Oak Park Mall no longer exists. It was a blight, a major blight, a enormous blight on the community in Austin. Council recognized that, working with our port authority, which, by the way, I'm the executive director of our port authority, maybe there'll be a question on that later. But we redeveloped that site. Hy-Vee was interested in doing a new store, a needed new store in Austin. They went back and forth, do we remodel the one that we have or do we build a new one? And we said, you know, hey, why don't you consider building a new one? And by the way, we'll, we'll work on a arrangement with you to help incentivize that and, and deal with that blight in our community. So that, I'm proud to say that's been taken care of. We have beautiful Hy-Vee store there, the former ShopCo, the movie theater. The movie theater is no longer with us, unfortunately. Still kind of another sore spot for us, but ShopCo just recently got announced that it's going to be occupied now. It was a little bit of a difficult proposition with, it's a 90,000-square-foot box, and when you're trying to subdivide a, a building like that, that's a little difficult. But I understand they have tenants for that, but that's been a real turnaround for the community because it, it took out that blighted area. So we can still do the barbecue, and I'll take it and show you the new shiny new Hy-Vee.
This is out of order turn. I just want to ask, did you bulldoze the mall then or no?
I didn't personally, I'd want it to.
Redeveloped it?
Yes.
Was it redeveloped or was it torn down?
It was torn, scraped off the earth.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
You would have driven.
I would have, I would have, I would have had my hard hat on and safety vest, but I would have done it.
Okay, go ahead, Dan. So Craig, we, we have a major league decision to make here.
Oh.
It's difficult. Well, you're interviewing us, just as like we're interviewing you.
Oh, sure.
I look for a strong leader who can communicate, listen, respect others, including the other elected officials that serve on other boards, Woodbury County Board of Supervisors and the Sioux City School Board members. And we are building on many successes that we've enjoyed over the years in Sioux City. So I'm going to be on question four, asking you, please share with us some of your experiences and successes in collaborating with other units of government and describe your general approach to intergovernmental cooperation and collaboration.
Yes, that's a great question. It's imperative, really. I mean, our taxpayers don't care whether it's from the city, the county, Timbuktu. I mean, they want to see progress in our communities, and we should do everything we can to work collaboratively with other governmental entities, private sector, nonprofits, all of those to make the community better. You know, whether it's fire services contracts that we have for our townships, whether it's a, I had a, we had a municipal auditorium that I had a form of relationship. The school board held their plays and musicals there in our facility and negotiating an agreement that had them paying a fair share of the cost of that facility. Those have to happen. We're in the midst of a $650,000 comprehensive plan process. To our knowledge, we're the first in the nation from our engineering firms that we're working with on that project to do a joint comprehensive plan so that we're on the same page. Austin is in Mauer County just as much as Mauer County and Austin. So we, we need to work together so that we're working seamlessly. One time I had an arts organization come down and, from the Twin Cities, and they said, tell us about the arts organizations that you have in town. And I said, you know, well, it's basically the Austin Area Commission for the Arts is what we've got. We've got the community theater and our Riverland Community and Technical College, we've got that. We have an Austin Symphony and those sorts of things. We've got a community band. But generally, we don't have like six, seven, eight different organizations working on arts. We've, we've really got one. So it just really goes to show that we, we need to, we do work together collaboratively. We don't have resources to try to recreate the wheel and have duplicity. There's times for that, but generally, we're not looking to find, fund multiples. We're trying to do everything we can to drive success of each individual entity, whether that's for the arts or, or economic development. We want to work seamlessly, and we don't have the financial luxury to, to recreate that. So we've, I think we've really done a bang-up job of working collaboratively, working with stakeholders, bringing everybody to the table to try to zero in on success.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Craig, I'm all about kind of that collaboration and communication. I appreciate you touching on that. And I think sometimes it's pretty easy for, or I guess the saying would be as talk as cheap, you know?
Yeah.
I think that sometimes you have to put that practice into action. But I would ask, question number six is really if you can describe your leadership style and explain how you empower or inspire the department directors around you, you know? What, not only would you describe as your leadership style, but maybe what would, what would your peers or people around you say about your leadership style?
I don't know, a friend of mine gave me this quote one time, and it seems apropos here, but it's tying to that point of how you motivate people. And it says, it's from a French writer, so forgive the sort of high flute nature of it. But if you want to build a ship, don't herd people together to collect wood and assign them tasks and work, but rather teach them to long for the endless immensity of the sea. And I think that's what we try to do is we're, it's, it's about making your community better, stronger. Let's not get caught up in the small things. Let's, let's, let's push for the broader goal. Where are we going, working together? Everybody's got a role. We have, you know, department heads and staff have expertise. We need to give deference for that, but there's also a role for council to have a, a say in that. And that's the fulcrum of what the manager position is, is try to wed the idea conceptually if we want to accomplish this. But how are we going to accomplish it, knowing that, oh, yep, there is a financial component to most things? How are we going to reconcile those things? And how will that be viewed by council? And I really, and I mean, why I do this position is not, not a job. Every day's a different day, and trying to figure out how the clock ticks and trying to address the challenges that are before the community. I, I, that's why I'm in this business, is to try to figure that out and provide workable solutions. I think I've been able to provide innovations that help with that. But that's a collaborative process of trying to chart the course for where we're trying to go. I really like that you guys have the strategic plan, you know? Hats off to you guys for putting that forward and knowing where your North Star, where you're trying to go. That provides a lot of efficiency for staff and the manager to be able to get to where you want to go if you've named it and claimed it, so to speak. Being able to do that's really powerful, but it, it's, I just, it's fun. I really enjoy that process, working with everybody to try to get to the end of the
Craig, as a follow-up to Alex's question, I'm going to ask question 23. If we were to assemble a group of your current or past subordinates, how would they describe you as manager or leader?
Yeah. I, I think good. I, I've got confidence of certainly my elected officials and, and staff. Is that a universal standpoint? I, you know, not always. Some, you deal with those challenges as they come forward. People, we went through a whole employee engagement process, learned about, you know, color energies and how people see things differently, kind of understanding that, I think was really helpful when we went through that process to know, yeah, we know that people operate differently, but kind of seeing that more at the grassroots level to appreciate how other people learn and how, if you're a different color energy person, how that, the other person is going to perceive that. Practicing appreciative listening is, is important to people and having people give honest feedback, as far as that's concerned, is really, really important. You know, having an open door policy if people have questions or concerns, you know? I, I want to practice an open door policy where they can feel, feel free to, to bring forward their concerns and, and talk them through. If the, you know, the answer, they don't like the response, we certainly could bring in the mayor or somebody like that to try to mitigate if we're still at cross purposes or see things differently. So I think that's, that's a healthy process. Not everybody, you know, you all don't vote unanimously every, every time, probably most of the time, I'm guessing, but there's times for different situations.
Based off the meetings you've watched?
Just a few, just a few.
Right.
And that's good, that's healthy. But not, you know, different people see things differently, and so trying to resolve those things. But, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, and not every sort of HR issue comes down to necessarily a policy decision-type outcome, but we're all pushing towards the same, same goal, so trying to keep that in mind as we go through it. And, you know, when I did my master's degree, they always said, the one area that you're going to have more, more than you ever thought to deal with is HR. And that has proven definitely true. It occupies a lot of, a lot of your administrative time trying to deal with it. And what is it, my mayor says, the, the world would be great if there weren't all these people involved. But, you know, that's, that's the nature that we've got to deal with. So there's always, always bumps along the way, but we try to work collaboratively and, and work as a team.
If I forced former subordinates to tell me what they would like to see you change or improve on, what do you think those remarks would be, if any?
I mean, the, you know, the biggest challenge is generally budget, budgetarily speaking of, or I guess even sometimes policy stuff, but this, I think is a misnomer that the manager's job is to convince council that this is the outcome we have to have. And I, you know, I think I touched on that earlier. I, I don't subscribe to that necessarily. Even some in the public is like, well, you're just supposed to tell council what to do. It's like, that's, to me, that's a fundamental misunderstanding of the position, while maybe, you know, a dictatorship works good for a while, but doesn't work good long-term. So that's not the system I want to sign up to, to work for. So sometimes that causes disconnect, right? When you want to do X, Y, and Z, and it's going to cost Y, I mean, council has to say, if, if the levy's going to go up 12%, and in order to make this happen, maybe the constituents might not say that that's something they really want to do. And so that can be frustrating, especially when everybody's working so hard, but we need more help to do this. Okay, well, council gets to say, is this, you know, right track, wrong track? Do you want to see more of this, less of that? That's the input we need from you to make the final decisions. And sometimes that, some people can be frustrated. that, some people can be frustrated by that, and I, I certainly understand that, but that's how we kind of work forward, in my opinion.
All right, so I'm going to preface this with, you've got a couple of union guys up here, so.
Union guys.
Be weird. Share with us some of your experiences with labor relations, including how many collective bargaining agreements you've negotiated during your career?
Cool.
And please describe your general approach to dealing with unionized employee groups.
Okay, we have eight bargaining groups in Austin.
Uh, nine, sorry. Sorry, guys.
And our folks are kind of surprised to know that our department heads are in a bargaining group as well, so that's a little atypical even for Minnesota as concerned. How many bargaining groups, or how many bargaining agreements have I done? I, I don't know the number. I mean, we generally on a, on a three-year contract renewal. I've been in Austin 10 and a half years. I'd have to go back and check to, to get you the exact number, but several, same, same with Worthington. We had a unionized environment there as well. So I, was, is there another part of your question that I missed?
Please describe your general approach to dealing with unionized employee groups.
General approach, okay. I mean, it, you know, depends on, is there binding arbitration? Is there right to strike? I mean, there's a lot, several factors to consider, you know, trying to, there's been some general discussion about being able to, you know, why, why can't we just do it like we're sitting across the kitchen table and have just a general conversation and not have it be this formal? And unfortunately, the collective bargaining process requires that. We had some challenges with people going around the negotiating team, union members going around the negotiating team to council members directly. You know, that's a, that's actually a legal, legal violation, so we have to abide by the law, so I guess those are, my approach to it is that, that, you know, this is, this is the reality of which we negotiate under and trying to get the direction from council to, to carry forward. It's not, it's not about Craig Clark's determination, it's, we just present what it is, the asks are and, and what they're, where we can, where we can accommodate, and at the end of the day, I still feel like that's our number one asset that we have to be concerned about, and we genuinely, you know, suffer if we don't stay competitive and, and we face cost increases if, if we have to. I mean, those are the realities of the landscape, really.
Thank you.
I follow Minnesota politics just enough to be dangerous, and I put your one seat over the majority for farm Democrat Labor Party, which in Iowa, we don't have that luxury, and most Iowa legislators call the mayors of the large cities the big liberal mayors and do everything they can to make sure that our job becomes more and more difficult.
Yes.
How are you going to handle that? Because every year, they do make it more and more difficult to do. I don't know why you'd want to leave for a state you got a chance to maybe talk to legislators and bet it could.
Yeah. Um, well, yeah, I mean, is that right?
Exactly.
You're, you're the liberal mayor?
They've got a, what do you call it? Majority that they don't have to even talk to the other side.
Yeah. Um, oh, boy, we could opine on this for a couple hours, Mayor.
Yeah, I know.
The, I, I guess, from what, you know, House File 718 in, in Iowa, it's really unfortunate that legislators that felt like they believe in local control are dictating to local governments things that they shouldn't and quite frankly, don't fully appreciate the realities of. A lot of responsibility to run a city. If they want to come and run our cities, I guess they should stand forward and, and run for election in that regard, but Minnesota, you know, it comes probably both ways. Sometimes when you get some help, you know, we get a, a lot of what's called local, local government aid from the state, that's great. Some that are supportive of local government aid are also supportive of new mandates on our wastewater treatment plant that helped precipitate $105 million increase for our new wastewater plant. And that's not to say that the rules and regulations are bad, but they do come at an expense, so, you know, I think our job, and that's, you know, having had a foot in both the federal and state level, knowing sort of how that operates can be helpful to, to navigate those challenges and then actually come forward with success as you're trying to extend the runway and, and do that for the Air National Guard here in Sioux City. Having that experience, working in a congressional office, I think can be helpful for those types of things, whether that or state grants, those things are important as well, so, yeah, I wouldn't be able to provide any kind of remedy to the realities in, in Iowa compared to Minnesota, but it's always a blessing and a curse, and I think what's maybe leave you with too is, from my perspective, is the city manager not to be politically, political, and I firmly hold to that, but you also have to be politically astute and knowing how those things work, which I feel I excel at, can be very helpful, so. I don't know if that necessarily answers your question, but that's what I'd share with you.
Okay, Craig, I'm going to do 24. Please share with us what strategies you would employ to ensure that the municipal workforce mirrors the diversity in our community.
Hmm, good question. Um, yeah, I haven't had as much success on that as I necessarily hoped for, but as I, I wanted to have a cultural liaison position within the police department. I think that would, would help a lot. What we have done is we were the second city in Minnesota to become a welcoming community, and that sort of is a, I think, a name it and claim it, that if we're going to be a welcoming community to our diverse population, of which our schools in Austin are 50% diverse, the schools in Worthington were 70% diverse, so my kids were in the minority in, in Worthington, and, and that's fine, but being able to put forward that, if you're going to be a welcoming community and don't do anything about it, you're going to look kind of dumb. So that really, I think, promotes us to being more active in that. I just got done going to the South Sudanese Independence Day Celebration. I'm going to go to the Benin Independence Day Celebration here in the next week, so I enjoy those things. They add a lot of richness to our community and think should be, should be welcomed. I also instituted what we call the, and I carried it from Worthington, we had an honorary council member program in Worthington where a, a general constituent of the community could serve and participate in the council meetings and meet with departments and those sort of things. We instituted that in Austin, but did a little bit of a twist in that, that we selected people of ethnically diverse backgrounds to participate in that. We had one guy's name, he's Karini, his name is Rain, and he's served as honorary council member, and they had a community celebration. Soccer's a big deal in their community, and they wanted to be able to rent the turf field at our, at our high school, and he directly attributed his experience of being an honorary council member to being able to work with the school district, get that set up, and actually hold an event where people from all around the state came and participated in the soccer tournament, but that, he really pointed to that, being an honorary council member because, not because of anything we necessarily did, but he started, we pulled back the curtain of, how, who are the people I need to talk to to make this happen? How does, how does this happen? You know, when they're new to the country and don't have that exposure, those things are unknown to them, but when we peel back the curtain and let them participate, they gain more assurance to be able to be more plugged into the community. I mean, it was just such a cool testament to be able to, to do that. So there's always more, more work to do, be done there, but really being a part of the community there, just as much part of our community as anyone else, so let's, let's, let's promote it that way.
Appreciate your remarks. I have a grandson that's in elementary school in St. Paul and diversity majority.
Yep.
And it's done a world of good for him. It's, it's done a world of good for him.
Yeah.
It's from that, being a welcoming community that it is. It's a, it's just incredible how, what we could be.
Yes.
And we're, and we're working on it. We're, we're working on it daily, and we'll get there, but I appreciate your response and your answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig, I always think it's extraordinarily difficult to get to know a candidate or a little bit about you in something formal like this, but I'm just curious, you know, if selected to become the next city manager, I'm on number seven, how would you seek to integrate yourself into the community and what would your strategies are, and what would be your strategies to become and remain visible and approachable by all members of the community? I know you alluded to some of the things you're doing in your community, but just talk to me a little bit about who you are as a person? If you're more of a homebody, you like going out and being a part of those things? What, what does that look like when you're the city administrator?
Yeah, I'm not too much of a party animal. You won't see me in the back of a squad, so you want to kind of avoid that, but, yeah, I suppose a little bit of a homebody, just love to work and immerse myself in, in things as that, as that's concerned, but, you know, I volunteered at the, the Chamber of Commerce does an ag cookout where they raise funds for their school kids' day on the farm, so I was the official, no one could do it better. The chamber director told me of handing off the, the bun and the butter on the line going through, so I, he said I did an exemplary job. He said it was seamless every time I did it. So, you know, it's things like that. It's, it's being involved in community events like that. The Austin Artworks Festival will be held at the latter part of August. I'm signed up, as I have every year I've been there, to be a part and help that great community event. I, I'm, I'm, I'm a sucker for a local parade, I admit it, I admit it. I love a local parade, participating in those is fun.
There, there we go. You got a couple votes in that deal.
Yeah, there you go. And then the festivals, I, I've not done a Greek festival, Mayor. Can you help me with that?
Oh, we've got it. We have a large Greek population.
I want to, I want to do that.
They'll be glad to have you help.
I want to, I want, I want to do that. I want to do that.
Great music, great dance.
Yeah, dance? No, dance I can't do.
Oh, they'll get you to dance.
I'm sorry. You're going to have to pick the other, the other candidate. Dance, if you're relying on me for dancing. My wife can dance, but not this guy. Not this guy. Um, so yeah, just immersing myself in that. I think, you know, I would obviously appreciate if I'm selected for this position, having council shepherd me around to meeting those people that I need to be introduced to in the community. You're, you're, you're the people that have went door by door, constituent by constituent to ask for their vote, you know, using that as a resource to be able to be introduced in the community is something I, you know, whoever you choose would be ignorant not to take advantage of, so I would definitely do that to immerse myself into the community. So hopefully that answers your question.
No, it does.
Yeah.
I'm going to go with number 27. As you've, I'm sure already known from all the council meetings and the research that you've done, which is great, thank you. Sioux City is a regional hub in the tri-state area with the largest population, Nebraska, South Dakota, Sioux City. How would you position us to lead and not just merely compete in the region with new employer opportunity development, et cetera?
Yeah, done a lot of work on the economic development front, you know, when we talk about different quality of life initiatives, certainly adding new economic growth to a community is really helpful for that end and keeping taxes in check, so it's, it's sort of part of the, the lifeblood as far as that's concerned. You know, being innovative, I think, is important, maybe, maybe being willing to go for things that maybe might seem a little scary, the, we instituted a housing tax abatement program. I did that in Worthington and then brought that over to Austin. We provide five years' tax abatement for any multifamily or single-family home. We didn't have any, when I started, we hadn't had a market rate apartment complex in over four decades. I stopped looking after, after that far back. We were able to bring that forward and, and be able to bring a market rate opportunity, and now we've done, we did two more after that with the same developer. It's probably my proudest, I guess, achievement, working with the mayor, that was decided on a split vote of the council. So, I mean, looking back, it's kind of funny to say that it was a split vote, but that's where we were. So trying to grow those things, we're also instituted a, a assessment strategy for new residential lot development where we, when you have to do a development, the developer has to pay the infrastructure costs, the water, streets, sewer, those things. We came up with a strategy to do the same thing that we do. If we do a street reconstruction, one of the options we give the business or homeowner is to pay that back over a 15-year period. I said, "Why aren't we doing that for any new residential lot development as well?" And we got that approved, had a developer extend their subdivision using that incentive, because one of the hardest things for them to accommodate is upfront capital for those things. The, the 15-year payback period is secured by the land, so they, if, if they would walk away and don't sell the lots, the city would take over the land and have that as collateral above the infrastructure costs that we have, so I think we're both protected, but it allows us, all we really have to do is be patient in providing that capital and the return. We're going to get paid back. The subdivision still pays for that improvement all on their own, but we're just more patient about how that transpires, so trying to provide that innovation is kind of, you know, things that I try to do to help spur economic development. We had a, we did a tax TIF for a manufacturer that was a bio-science biopharma company that invested $40 million, working to utilize the tools that we can. We came up with a incentive program. State of Minnesota provides some incentives for job creation. We took that, mirrored the same foundational piece, but added another layer to that, another enhancement over that. We called it the sort of icing on the cake to, you know, if somebody was genuinely deciding between coming to X community or Austin, we would have just a little bit more advantageous incentive to make them choose coming to Austin. It was based on taxable value and, and job wages. So those are just a couple examples of things that we've tried to do to be innovative and keep the foot feet down on economic development.
All right, I am going to, I'm going to go with question number 20. We've talked a lot about what you've done, you're well-versed in the, in the role of city manager. It's a very demanding, some would argue it's, it's 24 hours.
Yeah.
You're always on.
I concur with that.
Incredibly important to manage that stress level, too, so we know you don't dance.
Yes.
How to manage your stress level.
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I, I mentioned the liking antiques, I, when I go, and this is being recorded too, I suppose, but, so like some woodworking projects with that, with that, you know, cleaning it up, refinishing it, those sorts of things. I don't have to think a thing about things going on at the city, so I enjoy that as sort of a, as a, as a release. Certainly chasing after kids and their activities, soccer games, wrestling matches, those sorts of things were quite a bit of joy as a family, and, yeah, I think those, those things, the community festivals that I like to go to, yeah, taking those in, little day trips here or there type thing, yeah. Yeah?
I'll ask 90, and I didn't dream this question up, and we didn't ask it yesterday, but who was the most influential person in your life and why?
Most influential person in my life? Wow, man, that's a heavy one.
The mayor's very deep.
I didn't dream, yeah, I didn't.
He's deep.
Yeah, that's good.
Way too heavy for me to dream up.
Yeah, most influential. You know, I, I probably just, I guess I'd say my parents, I mean, you know, as you're... you know, when, as you're growing up, you don't really realize necessarily, you know, I think about how, how did I ever end up in sort of public service and stuff like that? My, my mom ended up later in life serving on the city council, but growing up, it was just kind of baked into what you do, you know, and so choosing this line of work, they never said, Craig, sent me down one day and said, Craig, I think you really ought to go into public service and public administration. There never was anything like that, but just sort of the way we went about being involved in the community. I think that's, that's part of it. My dad was into sales. He sold pole barn buildings and steel frame buildings for agricultural and, and commercial use, that sort of thing, but it's a, you know, very people business, so probably learned some of that. You know, I, I enjoy sharing the story, you know, as the, the budget is dollars and cents and categories. I think the, you know, that's the finance director's role to help keep that in line. And I think part of the manager's job is to explain what the numbers mean. It's one thing that look at the numbers on a spreadsheet and that's important, but trying to be able to relay that to what that means to our constituents, to our businesses of why we want to accomplish whatever that item may be. You know, kind of comes with a sales kind of feeling, I guess, to it, so.
But what time did you grow up in Iowa?
Indinola, just south of Des Moines.
You didn't, they, they let you get away from, what's the college there?
Simpson, yeah. Yeah, when I went to Buena Vista, I was, you know, Simpson was just too close to home, unfortunately. So I had to, had to get away a little bit.
Go for the balloon rides?
You know, I'm not much for heights. They're, they're beautiful, but I did, actually, it was in Austin, actually. One of the, the YMCA director was a balloon owner and pilot, whatever. And they did a tethering thing, you know, where you just have it on. That was enough. I like those people that jump out of airplanes with parachutes. I'm like, no reason to leave the ground. It feels pretty good.
I'm with you on that.
Huh?
I'm with you on that.
Yeah, I know. Hey, if it's, if it's their game, more power to them, but not for me. See, no dancing, no parachuting, no balloon rides. You got, you guys are getting to know me.
I bet you I can top you, though. The back of a fire engine's too high for me.
Right. They try to make me scale the ladder truck. I ain't going to do it.
Dan had that opportunity as well.
I did.
I took one for the team.
I didn't go up, and the mayor has been trying to get me to go down into a deep hole.
Oh.
Down at the, is that by the wastewater treatment plant or?
Down on the Floyd River. It's a
Oh.
lift, the biggest lift station for miles around.
Oh, wow.
Still trying to talk me into
About 60 feet down, so.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I'm just afraid I'd never, I'd hear the cover.
Well, you can get up at the end of the ladder truck, but it's the coming down that's the problem.
It is.
You know, that's what I, I'm not, no way.
Number 14. Let's talk about your greatest accomplishment.
Yeah.
as a professional, and what has been your biggest disappointment?
Okay.
As a professional.
Oh, greatest. I mean, I mentioned that earlier, that Mill on Main Housing Project probably is the greatest accomplishment, I would say. I, academically, I received the Scholar Award at my Masters in Public Administration, given to one of two students of the entire graduating student body. That was really humbling to get that. I also served on the, was selected to be board member on the League of Minnesota Cities. You know, it's a pretty humbling, too, to be selected by your peers to, to be able to serve on a statewide organization. I'm also a member of what's called the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which is kind of more the rural communities in the state. I've been a long-term board member on those. But to be able to give back and have influence on kind of statewide association things is, was really, was really impactful when you're working with your peers on something like that. So, and then the greatest failure, right?
Disappoint.
Disappointment. Okay, we won't say failure. We'll say disappointment. Let's go, let's go. Greatest failure. Lots, lots, there's plenty. Probably, you know, trying to, from the staffing perspective, trying to accommodate everybody, you know, the very different expectations from the city administrator. You know, not necessarily delivering on what they feel is right or what they want to see, you know, everybody's got a different. I've got good relationships with many of my department heads. There's some could be, could be better, admittedly. You know, that's, I think, part of the nature when you're working so hard is just sort of that, how do you get past when you see things kind of differently? Those can be really challenging and you'd like to be able to overcome all of those. And so just trying to do better on that, I would say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Craig, I would kind of touch on maybe something you were alluding to in that last question. Because I'm always going to think more, you know, when I thought about this position, the hiring of it and the questions we're going to be asking, what we're going to be thinking about. We're only up here for a short period of time. You know, some of us are elected longer or serve longer terms or, you know, or elected multiple terms, whatever that might be, but I really tend to think more about the staff. You know, you're with them day in, day out. Um, I often think about the impact this has on our staff in this position, this role.
Yeah.
You know, and, and just how you steer the ship and how you truly lead, I think is something I alluded to in a previous question.
Yes.
And so the question I wanted to ask was number 25, which talks about that the city of Sioux City has always placed a high value on creating and maintaining a healthy and positive workplace culture. And I always think we can do better, you know, I, I truly do. I think that we emphasize that and try to do what we can. And I know that we try to lead in a way that would encourage that. But what have you done in your current or prior positions to promote that type of culture in the workplace as well?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we've done actually quite a bit of employee engagement efforts over the last year, year and a half. Instituted a recognition program. We heard from employees that, hey, you know, why, why aren't we doing a recognition for, you know, five, 10, 15 years of service and that sort of thing? So we, we've instituted that. We formed a employee engagement team committee where we can, we've provided more open dialogue with departments. We do try to get participation from all the different departments on, on that team. So we've done March Madness. We did a shootout contest to be able to try to see who can sink the most baskets. And the guy that won the year before was really disappointed he didn't win this year, but keeps the competition alive. But it was really great to see their competitiveness come out, but also have, have a lot of fun doing that. We did, added, uh, we've done the employee picnic for some time. We'll have that coming up in August. Again, we did, recently did kind of a potluck where people bring their own dish to share and then we provide the hamburgers and hot dogs. And put that together to basically break down the silos from one department to the other where we can see people as people and not necessarily always asking about the job and actually has the positive impact of later, if you form that personal connection. Hey, yeah, I want to do this. I'll, I'll, I'll touch base with a guy I met at the street department. And I mean, it has positive implications for us in the workplace by forming those important personal relationships and that sort of thing. So really working on, on those things, trying to improve the communications. We hired another HR staff member. We really only had our human resource director. We hired a HR generalist for the first time this year to help try to encourage that communication and awareness about things. We're, we're, we're working on budgets. We just got announced that we're looking at a 35% increase in our healthcare amounts premium. So that's kind of hit a shockwave, but we're doing everything we can to communicate that upfront with them. When we go through, so we, contract environment where we have to, you know, healthcare is a term and condition of employment, so we have to do a memorandum of understanding if we're in the middle of a contract negotiation. And you always get that information late in the calendar year. And they say, oh, by the way, here's what the renewal rate is, and oh, wow, that's really big. And we need your, we need a decision on which way you want to go in, you know, three weeks' time. Like, oh, okay, this is a really big impactful thing to our employees, right? Whether it's compensation and benefits, those are the two, two big components. But having, trying to have dialogue, we're talking about different alternatives that we can look at where we have an actual healthcare clinic locally that provides some services that you don't need to go to the hospital for, or the clinic for, that we can do more affordably by, it's sort of like a membership organization that they can get individualized healthcare for more affordably. We're looking at an alternative where the, they have what they call navigators that if somebody's going to get a new knee surgery, this entity would, they can go through the normal process and go to Mayo and have the procedure done. And it's $60,000, but these navigators come back and work with the staff and say, or the patient, and say, hey, you can get your knee replacement. You can go to Mayo if you want to do that, and here's the cost, and it'd be subject to the copay. Or you could go to Twin Cities Orthopedics and have it done. And the price of it there is $30,000, and if you choose to go get it done for $30,000, you won't have to pay anything towards your deductible. Oh, I'll take the free option. So anyway, that, you know, when you're talking about something as significant as our healthcare, having those discussions and say, hey, you know, staff, if we're wanting to try to limit the increases and, you know, the contribution from the employer and employee, obviously both are going to go up. If it does, if we don't do anything to change the claims history, then we're both going to continue to see increases. So, but trying to do that in a way where we're open, transparent, and increase the dialogue well ahead of, hey, we've got three weeks to make a decision. That, those are the types of things that we're doing to try to help build better trust and, and improve. That's never, never an easy process. I don't want to tell you that it's not. But at the end of the day, if we try to do everything we can to bend over backwards to communicate, I think that's really important.
It's probably never done.
Yeah, for sure. It's always, always something moving.
All right. Craig, one of the things Austin, when my service with the city is housing.
Housing.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
We all know most communities have a lack of housing. One of your proudest projects had to do with housing.
Right.
Market rate apartment complexes, right? Where's your experience and what would you do about finding a program or a new strategy to address the need for affordable housing at market rate?
Yeah. I don't really see them as exclusionary. So the, the market rate component, if we, so in Austin, we were having trouble with market rate development, right? And so by solving that problem, I, I certainly would assert that that helps us with the affordable side as well. If we're talking housing as a continuum, right? When I graduated college, I had to pick the crappiest, least-cost apartment I could find, graduated to a nicer one, and then eventually into a house, et cetera. That housing continuum, if we're not producing units on the top end, that's arbitrarily constricting the affordable opportunities in the middle. If we open up the top end, that opens up the housing continuum and there's more options for people in the middle on the affordable side. But to your question specifically, we have advanced affordable housing projects. We've had two tax credit projects that were successfully funded and are on the ground in Austin. We have a third one that the application is in. We've gotten initial response from MHFA, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. And we scored very high because of our local contribution to, to the project. So we're hopeful to hear later in the year whether or not we're successful in a third project for the community. So directly addressing the affordable pieces that you talk about. I think, two, in the scheme of things, we really need to step back in the natural affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing. You know, statistics I looked at, Austin and Sioux City are very similar in the median household cost of a home. So we have a lot of affordable housing out there, and that's why, to me, focusing on rehab, rehabilitation of those affordable housing. We instituted a code enforcement officer for the city. You know, my plea with the council was when we're talking about our tax base, we're funded by property tax by and large, that we really need to be focused on making sure that when we're not creating enough on the top end, that we protect the existing housing stock we have and by its very nature is affordable. Why would we neglect that area? So we brought forward the code enforcement officer to be able to make sure that we don't continue to see nuisance and demolition projects of a, of a house that's, that's affordable. And each one that goes down, we lose that one more, one more affordable option for, for our community. So trying to be mindful of the whole housing continuum while also, you know, on the affordable housing side, the project is a, you know, 18, $20 million project. If we put in a million seven, that's a pretty good deal. So do we want to participate in those opportunities when there's needs out there? Council answered that in affirmative, and so we're, we, we go after those repeatedly, I guess.
Is that apartment complexes or is it single-family homes?
Those are apartments.
Apartments?
Yep. Yep.
Which is also included in housing. A lot of people overlook that, but yes.
Yeah, I know a lot of communities have done where they're, you know, if they would mandate on a development that if, you know, if you do X and you provide so many affordable units as part of the overall development, you know, with what, we've had a hard time seeing the number of single-family homes in the marketplace come forward, adding additional requirements to them if it isn't practical for us now at this point, but that's something I suppose we could look at in the future. Yeah.
So you already alluded to this a little bit. Earlier, you talked about the, the quality of life that you get in a city like Sioux City and the number of amenities that we have. But my question would be from number one, please tell us why you're attracted to, to this position and to the city of Sioux City?
Yeah. Well, I, as I shared with others along the way, I mean, first is there's an opening, right? There's only one administrator in the town, so that got me to looking in this direction. Having an interest to return to Iowa, being from Iowa, I guess my heart's always wanted to try to look for an opportunity in Iowa. You know, we had a little discussion about my preferences to work in more of a rural community. And I asked several of the folks that we met with earlier whether Sioux City is classified as rural or not. But what I mean by that is more not necessarily a population size. It's probably Sioux City doesn't necessarily meet that, but a place where people know their neighbors, can be involved and know, know what's going on and have that small-town feel. And so for everything I can determine from sort of a 50,000-foot, Sioux City meets that definition. So I'm attracted to it in that way. I'm really interested. It was really interesting to see the city being involved with the Tyson Center and, and, you know, the art center and, I mean, the list of, of collaborations that you've done that not every, was it Seaborg Center, too, the recreation one? You know, not every community is, you know, some of it's, well, that's not a city responsibility. And that's, that's a true, a true thing, but you've really delved into some of those things where maybe it might be 50/50, but if you're going to see it done, the city had to step forward and do that. I think that's really a testament to success. And from what I've been told, those generally operate with pretty minimal amount of contribution from the city. So if you're able to bring that forward by having that partnership, but not have a heavy burden on the taxpayer, I think, again, sort of hats off to you that you've been able to navigate that and not let necessarily maybe some principle limit your participation. But at the same time, you know, the $5 million sports facility with the Shields $5 million sports facility with the shields and that, I mean, wow, to be able to have an amenity like that, that you don't have necessarily a big role to play in, in that, that's, that's really neat. The aquatics park, like, who gets an aquatics park and it's not a city, city responsibility? That's amazing. So, you know, to be able to have those kind of amenities is really an interest for me to participate, the long-term stability of having a mayor that's been around a long time, professionalism of the staff, those are all things too, that I think are, as you're, you know, nobody wants to go and take on a circus show, right? So, having that stability and professionalism, that really bleeds through from the city, from Sioux City and everything that I've done, done my research on. So, we're, it would be a good time to come help you out.
Okay, we're done with our questions, so we're going to ask you if you have any questions of us.
Hmm. No, I, I really don't. I mean, other, you know, I suppose if you would like, sort of what, why do you do what you do? Why, why did you decide to run for mayor or council? Sort of what, what's your biggest objective or biggest accomplishment, those sorts of things? You know, I really appreciate that, you know, it's getting harder and harder to find people that want to, want to take the slings and arrows and serve on elected bodies. But it's critically important. If we, if we want good government, we need good people at the helm, so I'm kind of curious what, what sort is your why?
That's a good question. I like that. For me, it's been, I, I practice law, and I teach confirmation class, classes at church, and my parents brought me up to contribute, give to the community. And so, I've been very fortunate. I'm, I like to think I'm using my time and talents to help the city grow, have it go the right way, make sure we do everything legally, that kind of thing. And I've always wanted to help people, and I will listen. I'm a good listener, but I'm very careful to say, you know, I'll listen to you, Craig.
Right.
But I'll end up saying, well, you know what, I don't know what the, how the public will react to that. I don't know how the mayor and the council will react to that. But I'll sure take a look and, and not make a promise right there on the spot, because you really don't know
Yeah.
what's going to happen if you start having public hearings. And
Yeah.
Public hearings for me are, are very important. And so, I'm in my third term, 12th year, and it's, it's, there have been a lot of challenges, but I'm up for those.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, you just work through it.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing, sometimes something will come easy, but other times it might come very difficult, but you just stick with it. So, I've really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed working with the council members that, that I sit with. I enjoyed with the mayor. Something came up earlier, I just want to let you know about this. If any of us are gone, at least this has worked for me, and there's something, an agenda item that is not real-time sensitive, and I'm going to be out of the country or out of the state, the mayor is very good about if, if, if you request it, to defer that item until you get back, because it's, it's important to me.
Yeah.
I haven't had to do that too many times. I haven't, I haven't missed very many council meetings, but the mayor is really good to work with, and we don't always agree.
Yeah.
And, and like you said earlier, that's healthy. The public, they don't mind three-two votes, four-one votes. If it were five-zero all the time,
Right.
start to wonder. So,
Yeah.
that's my input, Craig. And I, and I've enjoyed hearing about your background, because it seems like we have a lot of similarities in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig, one of the, the last thing you said right there in asking your question is, what's your why? And I guess it reminded me a lot of one of my favorite books, Start With Why by Simon Sinek. And I often think about why I joined the council and what that initial reason was, and I think it evolves, you know, throughout. Why you keep going, why you keep, you know, fighting for a community and, and wanting to do that, that, hold that position and that role. And when I first was elected to this position or was even running for this position, I, I was pretty transparent that I was doing so selfishly. I was, had turned 31, and I said that I felt that we needed more representation from young professionals and just be a little more forward-thinking about what we could do to attract and retain more young professionals. In my day job, I actually work at Morningside University here in town, and, you know, we bring over 1,200 students every single year to campus. And I, I've wanted to do anything I can to make this a community that they would hopefully see themselves in, that we, people want to stay here, they want to establish roots here, start a family here, come back here if they've left.
Right.
And what I've really enjoyed is when they do come back here, just how impressed they are of some of the changes and things that we've been working on. And so, I've always been driven, whether it's selfishly or not, just to have more people in my demographic looking at Sioux City in a positive light rather than fleeing to just larger cities.
Right. That's awesome.
Go down the road?
I-
All right, all right.
Better ask the mayor.
For me, I am not born and raised in Sioux City. I grew up in California until my middle, late teens in another city close to here. So, I didn't have a longstanding history of the community, of people who grew up here, somebody's cousin, you know, the whole-
Yeah.
But I did start a small business in our historic district downtown Sioux City, and I just started meeting a lot of people. And after six, seven, eight years, I became really ingrained in the community, lots of volunteering, sitting on boards, and at the request of some of those constituents,
Yeah.
I decided to run as a different perspective on things, not someone who was homegrown. My, this is my second term. My second term, my first term, my tagline was Sioux City, yes, we can. Because I felt like the public was having a little bit of a, well, it's just Sioux City. It's just Sioux City.
Yeah.
Well, it can be something other than that. And my second term was, I dream big for Sioux City, because if we don't dream it first, it's never going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
So, I wanted to represent the female businesswoman community with a strong presence. I wanted to see some affordable housing, have a little more focus on, and so far, I've been able to achieve those things, and I'm pretty proud of that.
Thank you.
So, I am, I'm kind of the opposite experience with you. I am, I think, well, the mayor might have been born here. Were you born in Sioux City?
Absolutely.
All right. So, the two of us were born and bred Sioux City, and I, I would like to tell you that I ran, because when I was little, the mayor called a snow emergency and canceled my birthday, but that is not what I ran.
Wow. That's, that's an ultimate single issue.
But I will, I will take that with me.
Okay.
You and half the kids your age in Sioux City.
Never getting that Halloween back, buddy. No. I am, I am a lifer, what's called a lifer here.
Yeah.
And I have lived on the west side my entire life. And when I, when I ran, I, I ran as, you know, one of, one of Sioux City's native sons. I, I wanted to take a look at our community and, and help achieve some things that, that I think our community wanted to push for. Some of those things were affordable housing. Some of those things were bringing opportunity to the west side. And, and we've managed to, you know, push a lot of those things across the line. Some other initiatives that I've, I've been involved with have, have, you know, kind of, we've made some strides in, and we've also kind of taken things back. I was involved with one of the homeless shelters here in town. I served on the board for a number of time. Homelessness is something I'm very passionate about, and, and finding a solution for homelessness. One of the things that I really appreciate about Minnesota is they've, they've made great strides in terms of homelessness. And it, and there's no single right answer, but that is one thing that I continue to try and push for in Sioux City. Another thing that I've advocated a lot for is diversity in Sioux City, diversity in our staffing here at City Hall, and just diversity in our community. I, my other job, I'm an art teacher at West High, and I, that's my boss sitting right back there too, so I better be careful. One of the things that, that I am very proud of is we are a minority-majority district. We have a very diverse population of students. And so, those efforts and, and making sure that people of all backgrounds have representation in our city, not just as the staff here in City Hall, but also in our government and in our boards and in our commissions is extremely important to me too. And although I like to think we've made a lot of strides with that, we also seen the, the state and the federal government claw back on some of those initiatives recently. But it's something that we still work towards, that representation.
Great, thank you.
Well, I was born here. I went to Omaha for three years. Fortunately, found a wife there, and we came back to raise our kids here, and I often say only an American in Sioux City, Iowa could a not-so-bright kid like me do as well as I've done. So, I appreciate the support that I have had in this community and my business, and felt like I needed to pay a little back. And so, we started some quality of life issues back in the 80s and 90s, and quite frankly, they fell off the wagon, and not because I wasn't here, I'm not saying that, but they, budget became more important than investment in this community. And I thought that was a tragedy, and that's the only reason I came back. It's not anything other than that. I, I, you know, we've made this council and the councils before, have made great strides in the area of trails and expert centers, and those things that are important to people
Right.
come to our community. And my argument has always been that citizens will accept taxes as long as they see tangible evidence of those taxes. And you shouldn't be afraid to talk about taxes. It, nobody wants to raise them.
Right.
Get that. I don't like raising them any more than anybody else.
Sure.
But if you do think efficiently, I think you can have an impact on the community, and I think this council and councils before them have had that. So, it's a pleasure to serve the people here.
Yeah, that's obvious. Great, great job.
All right.
Ready to move on? Okay, my name is Mark Peterson. I'm the recruiting consultant with MNT. And this, Mr. Clark, is the community Q and A section. We've set aside about 30 minutes for questions from the community. And they were invited to submit questions online, as well as those attending this and other interview sessions were invited to submit questions. So, I have actually quite a few of them. We probably won't get through all of them. And I'm going to read them to you randomly, and I'm going to read them verbatim for how they were written and proposed. I will skip the ones that you clearly already answered from your dialogue with the city council. So, if you're ready, I'll just fire away, okay?
Let's do it.
How do you manage conflict?
Well, I guess I'd say, you know, one of the things of the position description was that you were looking for in the city manager is that is able and willing to engage in difficult conversations when necessary with both elected officials and staff to resolve unproductive conflict or address performance and behavioral issues. So, you know, the, you know, nearly three decades of experience in government, there are times that you have conflict, and you can't shrink from that. You need to actually rise to the challenge, and I guess that's what I think I've done. Have there been bumps along the way? Absolutely. Dealing with conflict, I think being a fair broker of, of the facts, coming to a conclusion. Let's see, which one was it of you? I think, Dan, that you mentioned, was that you that mentioned the people listening to you and that you reserve comment? You know, we often get people say, you're not, council's not listening to me. No, it's not that we're not listening to you. We've heard you clearly, but there are more people that are at the table than just what you're asking me to do, and they represent the whole community, and there's other people, and trying to have them appreciate that there may be other people out there, as much as they stridently feel one way or the other, that there may be other people that have an opposing view or a slightly different view, or that it is, it's not just, you know, what they really mean is you're not doing what I'm asking you to do. And that, that's a different, that's a whole different equation. So, trying to step back, you know, just another, maybe a little example is somebody's dealing with, you're dealing with conflict, and the city sends them a letter that they have to mow their grass. You know, you know, time, they were difficult. They had this reason and that reason, and if you just try to have them step back and say, we're just trying to have the community look good. That's what we're trying to do here. Unfortunately, there's an enforcement mechanism, and you have to comply, and I mow my grass, and my neighbor mows his grass, we need you to mow your grass too. So, trying to have, not necessarily fixate on the issue that they're, that the conflict is coming up over, but having them focus on, well, what's the broader thing we're trying to accomplish as a community? And that, and that example is just that we want our community to look presentable. So, that's how I think, generally, I'd resolve with conflict. Each circumstance would be different, but maybe that hopefully gives you an idea of how I would try to approach it.
Thank you. Next question is, what motivates you?
What motivates me? Um, yeah, I think I am a bit of a perfectionist. Always want to do the, the best job I can. So, I suppose a bit of perfectionism, trying to always achieve, you know, the, I think it was mentioned earlier, there's a lot asked of a city manager, city administrator, that sort of thing, and you're doing it for the interest of the broader community. I mean, what you're literally working on every day is to try to make the community better. Sounds a little idyllic, I suppose, but that's our, that's our goal, and it's a heavy responsibility. So, I think that's probably what leads me and motivates me to do the best job I can.
Okay, thank you. I think you may have answered at least part of this question, but I'll go ahead and read it. Mr. Clark, citizen taxpayers have not been privy to your cover letter or resume. So, what is your educational background, and where did you grow up? And I think you already shared your-
Yeah, the grow up as Indianola, and educational background, double major in political science and history from Buena Vista College, now a university. That dates me a little bit, that they, they've added a few graduate programs, so they changed the name on me, doggone it. And then, master's in public administration from Hamlin University in St. Paul, Minnesota. Yeah.
Next question, how would you balance economic development and still maintain the character of the city?
I think that's a great question, actually. Land use is, I don't know what your experience here in Sioux City is, but I think this carries probably for most communities, some of the most controversial and passionate issues are those surrounding zoning uses. As, as I've driven around the community to see the, I'd say kind of integrated zoning, you know, I mean, housing, commercial, not, I mean, it's more fluid, and I, I'm guessing that's a creation of the fact that the age of the community, kind of holistically, and how it developed naturally and over time, people just kind of assume that. But the zoning issues being sort of controversial, but at the end of the day, trying to promote that economic growth, the fabric of a community, I really believe you get what you ask for, making a lot of conscious decisions about how that's going to look. You know, from a zoning standpoint, for example. You know, I, I think as I toured around, you know, the sort of, if people have their largest investment of their life, and you're telling them that there's going to be a new subdivision next to them, that can be disconcerting for them. But again, maybe focusing on, instead of saying, okay, you don't want to see that in your backyard, I get that, but do you agree with us that you want Sioux City to grow? And that housing is an important component for the city? Yeah, 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 I, I think that's true. Well, where do you anticipate that's going to, to play out? So, each one, it's sort of a little, every circumstance can be, be different, but I think I, as I've driven around, really seeing the sort of flexibility to be able to, to meet those goals. You know, that can be sort of the character of the community that you get.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question, are you really interested in this job, or are you simply unhappy in your current position?
I wouldn't apply if I wasn't.
Okay, good enough. Um, in the cities that you have been employed, how and who managed weed control on city property, and how successful were you? And how successful were you in controlling weeds? And there were a number of weed-related questions I will just add.
Do I need to clarify what weed we're talking about?
Just a noxious weed. I don't think anything specific.
Okay, noxious weed, very good. Actually, I wonder if someone didn't plant that question from, from Austin, maybe, but...
Do what you did, plant that question.
Yeah, I see that. Actually put a fair bit of attention to that. Weeds notices go through our park and rec department, actually. I think we still have some work to do on, on that. Back to a comment I made earlier, you, I think a community gets the community, you get the community you ask for. And if you don't ask for the properties to be maintained, that's what you'll find. And if one person, I think it is a little bit the broken window approach, if one person lets their property go, then, well, if they're doing it, that sort of starts become, becoming more of the norm and you'll see that spread. So we've tried to address that as best we can. We send out the violations to folks and they have to comply. The fines, it seems that we, we're not able to get the change in behavior until some sort of financial implication comes to bear. And so that's transpired and, and we've seen some improvement, but it's, it's, it's like a gopher. It keeps popping up in other places. So we're trying to do what we can.
Okay. Next question, have you figured out a cure for homelessness?
No.
If not a cure, then what methods of dealing with this problem have you tried with some success?
Yeah. We have homeless folks in Austin, generally a small number. Largely, we've tried to connect them with services and they've been reluctant to want to, want to do that. Obviously, and we talked about this with the department head meeting, you know, there's often substance abuse issues, mental health issues that come along with it as well. I certainly don't profess to know what the answer is in that regard, but we really haven't wrestled with it too much in, in Austin.
Okay. Next question, how do you approach community improvement planning in the context of limited resources?
Really, just it's about a budgetary prioritization process and, you know, not every good idea can be funded and, you know, just trying to work through those priorities and focus resources to where we can have the greatest chance for success, I guess, just generally speaking.
Okay. Next question, name one consultant you've worked with and why?
One consultant? Oh, geez. Wow, that's a, I'm surprised you hear that one. A lot of different consultants. Stan Tech is one that we've worked with. They, they've done a great job for us on community-wide, it's called a community EPA, Community-Wide Assessment Grant, where we've been able to go and do an environmental assessment of numerous properties, doing phase one, phase two investigations so that they can be positioned for redevelopment, a deal, deal with contamination, a lot of historical sites in, in Austin, as I'm sure there are here as well, that have contamination issues. But if they can be aware of them, have them be able to be addressed, making sure that the property can be transitioned if a new buyer wants to buy it, as lenders require, you know, environmental, environmental components before they're going to extend a mortgage on a, on a property. So we're doing what we can to try to position properties for, for redevelopment as far as that.
Okay, next question, describe a crisis you managed as city manager or in another leadership role. How did you lead through it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, unfortunately, we had officer-involved shooting. Individual was holed up in their home for several days, came out, went to a convenience store, charged an officer with, with a knife. He responded with, what I feel confident was and saw was a textbook case of use of force, proper use of force. Dealing with that, that was shortly after George Floyd, obviously in the same state that we are. And I was encouraged to visit with your chief about the work that you do. And I think similar, we've done that, too, to build trust and confidence amongst our community with our law enforcement, that when those things that you do on a day-in, day-out basis, they don't necessarily pay dividends frequently. But when you have an officer-involved shooting and have that confidence that the department is to be trusted, really invaluable and you can't, you can't try to create that in a day or short period of time, obviously. So being able to be proactive in the community, be a, be a part of the community is really important. And, you know, we had people that came down and protested and that sort of thing. So obviously respecting their right to, to do that, but be aware of, of those things and how to, how to handle that, you know, how to deal with officer that dealt with, you know, tragic circumstance. In that occasion, I didn't, but we had another officer-involved shooting previously. And, you know, I, I went to the hospital to see him. I mean, that's incredibly, I can't imagine what that would feel like to be having, being put in that kind of circumstance. So letting them know that we're there for them as well is important. So, yeah, the, it's hard to beat the officer-involved shooting, I think, as far as stress and critical incident.
Okay, thank you. Can you share an example from your previous roles where you successfully partnered with the local school district to improve outcomes for youth and families?
Hmm. Yeah, I guess I would say one, little bit of a tangent, maybe, but we continue to get sort of nickel-and-dime repairs out of our municipal swimming pool. And so that led me to recommend that we do an outside facilities assessment to get our arms around what are both the short-term and long-term costs for our pool and what would a replacement pool cost. Those costs really demonstrate that we should be looking at replacement of a pool. And we're about $100,000 subsidy into the pool on an annual basis. So we had that discussion with the council recently at a work session and one of the council members was talking about, you know, the costs and we have a, we have a pool at the YMCA and, you know, should we use that one? And certainly that's a fair, fair assessment. But, you know, as I talked with our park and rec director after that, you know, I don't think it's unfair to say having a municipal swimming pool has cost implications for things like our police department, right? Our, you know, if they're not behaving themselves at the swimming pool, somehow ironically, short distance away is our Austin Public Library and they maybe migrate there. So having a amenity such as a swimming pool has implications for keeping people focused on a positive outcome rather than maybe doing something negative. So I guess in an indirect way, I think our, it's important to, something like our swimming pool helps underscore and provide a physical outlet for people to choose good behavior and that sets a better environment. We're not, I mean, we work collaboratively with our school district, but they, you know, there's not a lot of overlap in programming, but I think maybe that's, maybe a similar example that I could use.
Okay. Next question, what techniques do you use to engage diverse populations, especially those that are underserved?
Mm-hmm. I think I mentioned that earlier, you know, attending events with our culturally diverse members, establishing the honorary council member program with sort of ethnic diversity. Oh, one thing I didn't share on that, we had a, this was really cool. We had a guy that was from Austin originally. He, his dad was a local doctor. He went off and was a photographer. And back in the day, these corporations would do pictures of all their executives. They're not doing that too much anymore, but, and have it in a book and that.
Executives on pictures right now is not very cool, so go.
Yeah, all right. So anyway, he made a career of that out in New York City. He came back to Austin, when he came back to visit after, you know, decades being gone, he was like, oh, my gosh, this is really a diverse community. So he took his skillset of picture-taking to really sort of memorialize the ethnic diversity that's in Austin and put together Our Austin, Our America book. We did exhibit that we was on display at the Minnesota State Capitol to highlight our ethnic diversity in the community and make a sort of a coffee table book of the photos in, in book form. So that was really cool, but really brought the community together. And, you know, as they say, a picture says a thousand words. You know, that really was cool to reflect our, our ethnic heritage there of, of our community in a visible way. So I guess that, those are kind of some elements of how we build a more inclusive Austin.
Okay, I think time for one more question. And this one, I'm not really expecting an answer, but it was submitted earlier and I can't resist reading it.
Oh.
Mr. Clark, there's a goofball in the Iowa legislature who wants to add five counties from Minnesota to Iowa's ninety-nine counties. Which five would you give him? But you don't have to answer. But it's a great question.
Yeah, that was an interesting component that, as a side note, we got a, we got that, that was a great material for press releases, I think.
I'm sure.
Yeah, but, you know, and there's some people, yeah, that'd be better, we'd have lower property taxes. I'm like, okay, well, and I think I mentioned it earlier, we have a supportive local government system called Local Government Aid in, in Minnesota. So, you know, $9.8 million comes from the state to Austin. And believe me, in a lot of capacity, I'd like to, if the state called Austin and said, we want to do X, Y, and Z, I'd, I'd like to hang the phone up in some instances and say, I think you got the wrong number. But the reality is, we're really dependent on that state aid and that system's created to help with low property tax wealth communities. And we're one of the largest recipients in the, in the state. So I quickly tell them, you might want to, that might be true, say, on your income tax, but big-picture-wise, you're probably a little better off with that local government aid helping keep our property taxes down. But facts are kind of stubborn things.
You were right, right, went up there, so they.
Yeah, I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe it. That's got to be sacrilege. I just, well, how could they do that?
Yeah, I think they're.
It's in the name.
Replanning, so.
Yeah.
Well, that concludes our time. We want to thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to come visit with us.
Thank you.
And we have a tough decision to make, but we'll be in touch.
Yes, thank you for everything you do. Thank you for the time you've had to put in on this process and I look forward to hearing from you.
We'll take a break.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you.
We're doing the.
Don't you dare.
interview processes and we have a lot of questions that we will ask and, and we'll go down our list. So go ahead and do a little introduction of yourself and we'll start.
Well, first I'll make sure that works. First, I'll start by saying thank you for the opportunity today. I've had a very full day, meeting many department heads, staff, and external organizations. I appreciate your consideration in my application and I do look forward to your questions as well as my own. A little bit about me, I'm currently residing in the city administrator for the city of Winterset, which is southwest of Des Moines. A 5,300-person community, notably known for John Wayne's birthplace and the bridges in Madison County. Been there four and a half years, my wife and our five children. And I, this is my first city admin gig. Long before that, I had a history in public safety, education, and emergency response. So that's where my background comes from. I have an undergrad in emergency and disaster management and I have a master's in public administration from Drake University.
That's good for me. Go Bulldogs.
Go Bulldogs, that's right.
That coyote that was there yesterday. Yeah, that's, that's right. That's true. That's true. All right, well, thank you. Okay, Julie, you get to lead this one off.
Oh, my gosh. Well, I'm going to start with number one. We have questions already printed out for us and we just are going to jump through, so you'll hear us just say what number question it is. It's just for.
Okay.
those of us who are getting old, we can keep track. All right. Please tell us, why are you attracted to this position in Sioux City, Iowa?
Well, I'm at a point in my career where this opportunity could result permanent. So I mentioned relative that this is my first, my current job is my first city administrator job. And I know you can't ask, but I'll tell. I'm forty years old with five children, five, seven, I'm sorry, nine, seven, five, and three twin-year-old, twin girls. So permanence is what I'm looking for and I think this opportunity could be that. Furthermore, I've told many folks today that Sioux City is not new to me. I was a part-time resident for Sioux City for five years. I had the luxury of serving in the Iowa Army National Guard for twenty years and five of those years were with the 113th Cav down here at the guard base. So one weekend a month for five years, I was a part-time resident of Sioux City. Furthermore, the opportunity aligns with my family. We have family in Sioux Falls, Yankton, and Lyon County, Iowa. So at least two to three times a year, we travel through. So with the, the known familiarities and comfortableness in Sioux City, with also the alignment of my family desires was the reason I applied for this opportunity.
Thank you for not applying for a job in Sioux Falls.
Yes. They have a strong form of government.
Drew, I, first off, I guess I would just say that I really appreciate you taking the time and the opportunity to come up here and apply. I was enthused reading and looking over your resume and I'm excited just to learn a little bit more about you. I understand that this can feel rather rigid and I think our hands are pretty much tied due to the Supreme Court ruling and some of the things that we have to be able to do. But I will do my best to try with some of our questions, at least, just to get to know you a little bit more. And I hope that you can become comfortable with is what is probably naturally an uncomfortable type of interview or at least situation where you're trying to talk and learn about each other. So with that said, I wanted to, my question is going to be, let's say, number three, is one that I've asked now a couple of different times, is just really focused on, in today's immediate nature, whether it has to do with politics or a company or anything like that, sometimes we focus on short-term versus long-term and those types of things. I'm most interested in, if you were selected for this position, what would your focus be in the first ninety days on the job? And are there any specific objectives you would hope to accomplish?
Well, thanks for that question. I've answered it a few times today.
I bet, man, I bet.
But my smaller interviews. The number one thing that I've been consistent with in my response to that question is to build trust. The first thing that must be done is to build trust and a relationship with not only department heads, direct reports, yourselves. And I would do that in a manner that was, I guess I would coin inside-out. I just left the city manager staff meeting, the three gals that work. I just left the city manager staff meeting, the three gals that work closest with the position. And then prior to that, we had gone to department heads. So my goal would be, in the first 90 days, to observe operations and procedures and processes, and truly understand what individual employees' concerns are, but starting with internal. Then I would move to the outside, as I like to say, which would be not only department heads, but support staff there. And then moving to community stakeholders, such as the newspaper, the media, TV, radio, the chamber, meeting with the colleges, the school boards, and largest employers, obviously, with respective department heads as necessary. And I would continue to work towards moving, towards making a relationship with the Board of Supervisors, SimCo, the Iowa City Managers, regional meetings. And then ultimately, I would hope in the first 90 days to meet with our state and federal representatives, to, if nothing else, begin to build that trust, relationship, and network, and understand what their concerns are, but also communicate and advocate for the city of Sioux City.
Appreciate it, Drew.
Yep.
Hey, go ahead. Drew, I also want to thank you for making the application. I was really happy to see that you're one of the finalists to come and interview with us as you're interviewing, we're interviewing you, you're interviewing us. And what I've stated is, we have a major league decision to make, and I look for a strong leader who can communicate, listen, respect others, including the other elected officials. And you've already mentioned, well, here it'd be the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors and the Sioux City School Board members, to build on the many successes we've had in the city. And I might just add, I'm sorry that your Board of Supervisors are going through what they're going through in your county, but I think they'll work through it. So I'm sorry to hear that that's happening, but those things do happen. So
Yes, sir.
So my question is related to that. Please share with us some of your experiences and successes in collaborating with other units of government, and describe your general approach to intergovernmental cooperation and collaboration. That's question four.
Thank you for the question. So collaboration between the city of Winterset and other operations. So I can't draw just fully on the city of Winterset. A very small note would be, our development group is a countywide development group. And the predecessor, who is now my mayor, did not have a rich benefits package. And when he departed, I took the opportunity to propose that that employee would be a member of the city staff at the will of the development group. And all that merely did was allowed us to maintain positive traction with a positive benefits package. It worked out very nicely. And it's been collaborative between the county development group and citizens at large, as well as the city. So that's a very small example. But going further back, as far as county, I told you, I worked as a Madison County Emergency Manager for a brief period of time before and during COVID. And if you want to talk about collaboration and shared resources and willing to cross the metaphorical border of a city or a county, I don't think I could express it any better than in the times of a natural or pandemic disaster. Furthermore, I worked at the Iowa Department of Public Health where we did a tri-state, excuse me, a Region Seven response, which included four states on a statewide exercise, and had compacts and MOUs to share medical equipment, providers, pharmaceuticals, anti-vaxination, all sorts of things, relative to ensure the safety and well-being of the citizens of Iowa. So not just as a Winterset city administrator, but for the last 15 to 20 years, I've been working on collaboration across what I would call imaginary borders, because at the end of the day, we're all Iowans.
Thank you, Drew. Sioux City's obviously a lot larger than any community you've ever been in the past. Challenges and budgets are, you know, I'm not naive to think that, that, I always tell the small-town mayors that you have the same problems we have, it just takes more money to solve. But, but this is a full-service city with all the kinds of department heads and departments that you've never experienced. I guess I'm wondering what your, what your strategy is going to be to try to get a handle on that, because it's not an easy government to get a handle on, even for someone like Bob Padmore that came into the job and had been the assistant city manager. There was still things to learn. I think Mike, filling in the interim, has learned that there are things that, that he had to learn. So I guess I'm wondering how you will deal with that.
So speaking relatively to budget, is that relative to budget or just operations in general?
Just operate, I don't, budgets, I mean, budgets are budgets. It's just the dollars that fill in the blanks. It's how are you going to?
Yeah. It starts way back with that initial question. You know, I believe in leadership is, at its root, a foundation of trust and beef in your department heads. We have a thing that we refer to of Hispanic control. Hispanic control is any person can manage up to three, three to seven things at any given time proficiently. And as I've proven in my past, multitasking is a farce. It requires your dedication and effort. And so that's why department heads exist, to manage their departments with their subject matter expertise and lead in the best interest, not only their employees, but the benefit and the services of the city. So that would be my first task, is to, again, understand what the desires, needs, and efforts that are being made at each department head level, and understand those holistically. And secondly, do that through building that relationship with the department heads. There's no, there's no misunderstanding that this size community far exceeds that of the one I'm in today. But I would challenge you to say that in my military experience, an 85,000-person community is in perils compared to the responsibility and the men and women I provided and led medical services to. So I think the correlation of my professional experience as a city administrator might be in perils, but I would say that the other experiences that I've had, especially in my military state-level responsibilities, are not that far off.
Okay.
Matthew.
All right. I've got a question for you, but I have a bonus question I'm asking first. You put John Wayne on the table.
Yep.
So he has a famous quote about Sioux City, in particular. So leading up to it, it's, what would have happened if they knew the gun was empty?
Nope.
Been a Saturday night in Sioux City.
Everybody that's watching this live feed from Winterset is now groaning.
Sorry. I don't do impressions, but that was the best as I could do. Never embodied.
We'll get you a ticket to the museum. We'll bring you down.
So my question is, occasionally, the council will take a different direction than maybe one that, that you would recommend. So this is number 12. If, if we were ever headed down a direction where you thought that, that a policy that we were, we were changing or something we were voting on, that we could be making a decision that would be detrimental to the city, how would you handle that situation? And have you ever encountered a situation where that's happened?
Well, I'll start answering the first part, and then I'll give you an example. I believe this position, and at its root, has a fiduciary to the city of Sioux City. The city manager has a fiduciary to the city of Sioux City. You have a fiduciary to the elected, or as an elected official, to the citizens of such. And I don't want to say there's a separation of the two, but if you were to propose something that would be detrimental to the city, and therefore the citizens, it would be my obligation to advise you against it. As the city attorney sits here, he has an obligation to advise you legally what can and cannot be done. If I advise you, I've met my obligation. From my position as a city manager, I do not, I try and remove my personal bias from the decisions made in a very abstained, objective determination. If it, if it's the will of the people, then it shall, it shall be. But I will also advocate on behalf of my department heads and their desires, because I wholeheartedly support them and their decisions, and frankly believe their subject matter experts. So if there was an impasse from a proposal, or you were to propose something that would affect the city, I would have a responsibility to advise you against that. Past that, at the end of the day, it comes to a roll-call vote. So I would advise, to the extent possible, but remove my bias, but advocate for what I believe to be the best interest of the city based on the department head. And then your follow-up question was, have I ever had that example? Well, there has been a couple examples of relative to ordinances in my current city. Completely unaffected personally, but there was desire from a part of the council and a desire from the other half. And my obligation was to assist all council members, and not working in opposite, but I worked diligently with the council members that were in favor to provide a backup reason. And I also provided the opposite council members the same conversation as to why it might not be in their best interest. The subject matter is immaterial. I'm obligated to assist and advise the city council and mayor as my primary chief responsibility. And so I do that without bias. But if I believed it to be detrimental, I have an obligation to advise you of such.
Hi.
Hi. My question is number 22. I mentioned earlier that my most rewarding and challenging work that I'm involved with at the city is affordable housing challenges that it presents us. Can you please share with us any programs or strategies that you've employed in your current or previous positions that address the need for affordable housing, also has created a positive outcome?
Yes. Well, affordable housing is a buzzword, and housing in general. And if we've noticed anything from the state of Iowa, they've doubled down on housing, as we know with House File 718, reduction of property taxes, and the new Iowa Thriving Communities designation, where they're incentivizing development through workforce or low-to-moderate-income housing. And so you asked the question, we did apply in the city of Winterset. It was a lengthy application, and there was many benchmarks to be met. We did not receive the opportunity. However, it was applaudable that we were even eligible to apply. So we've made positive traction, and that effort's been done by positive population growth, the adoption and implementation of a rental inspection program, which isn't legally required until you're 15,000. And at 5,300, a department head in a comprehensive plan told us we should do it. And so we leaned into it and did it. We have an outdated housing study, but what we do know is our commuting patterns tell us that we have people commuting into work, and we have people that are leaving for work. And so that would be my first question here in Sioux City, would be looking at commuting patterns. And if the goal is to retain workforce housing, then we need to know what kind of income those people are making, based on how, what type of accommodations they can afford. There's no good sense in building million-dollar homes for people making hourly rates. So that would be data-driven decisions to understand, okay, what does our workforce and what can they afford? You take that information to the Iowa Finance Authority, the Iowa Economic Development, your regional planning, I understand where, I wrote it down, SimCo?
Yep.
As well as working with your local economic development here. That would be my first step. Understand what the commuting patterns are and what the population can afford to procure. Then you ask the question of incentives. And, and that's a slippery slope, because we know tax increment financing is not a money-making opportunity. It's residential rollback continues to deplete the revenue, which we see in our operating budget. So too would be the depletion of returned investment by developers. So TIF doesn't seem to be the lever to pull anymore. And so other forms of increment or incentives or partnerships, buying down the cost of the house through collaboration or bulk purchasing of materials is another avenue. So many different avenues to build the houses, but I think you got to figure out what houses you want to build first.
I think you're right. And we're trying to gear even a little bit more in getting it out of that generic statement of affordable housing. And we're also trying to shift to low-income, you know, housing as well. And whether it be an apartment or a freestanding home, affordable housing touched on in all areas. So, yep. And we do qualify for workforce housing tax credits on many of our projects with our developers here in Sioux City. We've been able to take advantage of that.
And again, the, the housing, that's where it's obvious that the state has invested their resources and desires. And so why wouldn't we lean into that?
Right, right. And we do.
Yep. Thank you.
Drew, something that's important to me is really getting to learn a little bit more about you personally, and kind of what your style is, and thinking about how that interaction with our staff, with the directors, how that would go, and what that type of environment would be, because I think that that's critical. You know, if you're going to be leading the charge, if you're at the helm of the ship, you know, I want to make sure that the people working below you have clear direction and are inspired by you. What I would really wonder is, if you could describe to me your leadership style, and explain maybe a little bit about how you empower and inspire those directors beneath you.
I appreciate that question. I've answered it no less than five times today. So I think I've had a good
I tell you what, man, I'm just teeing you up. I better, we better get new material here, right?
Yeah. Well, I spoke a little bit about building that trust, camaraderie, and culture, right? So leadership style, I appreciate that I am very self-aware. I know what makes me tick. And I also appreciate that's not the same for everybody. But with that being said, our people are our most valuable asset. We collectively in this room couldn't do half the work, if even a quarter of the work, of the daily input from our employees every day. And true and sincere appreciation and acknowledgement of their efforts, even just showing up to work to do the job, in today's day and age, where public service and public safety are not at the top of the enrollment, needs to be the focus. And so sincere appreciation and acknowledgement for effort is where we start. That begins to build the trust. My leadership style is all about empowering people to make decisions with the, within the authority of their position, if that makes sense.
It does.
I have a firm belief that it does not take a yes from a supervisor to do the thing you know that needs to be done and you've modeled 100 times. There should be no barrier for a citizen, a project, or a process to need higher authority when somebody is fully competent and capable to grant that. And that's improving efficiency in government. I implore or empower my department heads and employees that builds that culture. And as far as my leadership style and communication, I've said this again, no less than five times, who you see here and your desire to know who Drew is, I'm authentic. This person you're speaking with here today is the same person you see at the ballfields, the same person that's dropping kids off to practice, and the same person that sits in city council. I have no time, desire, or energy to put on different faces and masks for different environments. So the person you're speaking to today is the person that also speaks to your department heads, that also speaks to your citizens. I'm very passionate about that, because I don't have any time for the inauthenticity or the charades. I'm very quick to understand a problem when competent, and make a, a decision in the best interest of the city, but also with intuition. I have no regrets on missteps or failures. I know there'll be a question about it. But the point being is paralysis analysis, or analysis paralysis, is not healthy in any situation. There's a reasonable amount of time to digest and discern a steady path forward. But does it have to be your decision? If I'm not the subject matter expert, why would I, why would I hold that question? Allow the person to make the decision and move forward. It's always easier to recover from a misstep than it is to, to pick yourself up from the beginning. So I'm very much quick to empower, react, and support whatever, whatever happens, pick up those pieces and keep moving forward.
Appreciate it. That was question six. I apologize.
Drew, I'm gonna do question five. Please share with us how you prefer that the members of the city council interact with department directors and other senior staff members.
I think that's a situational question, sir. I think context needs to be provided to that, because never would a city manager tell an elected body that they can't communicate with any employee of the city. But I think the question would be, under what context? Is it personally serving, or a bias, or a not beneficial? Is it personally serving or a bias or a not beneficial, right? Is it a second conversation? Or is it, I don't understand this. Could you please take five minutes to explain it to me more?
Well, the question I would have is, do you, are you on a need-to-know basis? Do you, do you care if I, as a council member, contact the directors and just get help from them to maybe accomplish something for a citizen without your knowing it?
So the, the question relative to a citizen, so if you're acting on behalf of a citizen in advocacy and going direct to a department head, is that the normal path of service that any other citizen could utilize? Would you expect to answer phone calls day in and day out? Or would you rather that citizen be directed to the normal channels of communication? And is a department head the person that needs to solve that question? Might come from the top down, but what, maybe the front desk could answer that question more efficiently. So I guess what I would say in that situation of a citizen called you and had a complaint, concern, or comment, and you took it to a department head, I think the best answer would be, I'm aware of this, but would you mind, I'm going to take this to the department head and then I'll follow up with you as a citizen to make sure it's taken care of. If you take a situation to a department head that is frankly managed at a lower level, we're causing inefficiencies in government. I would encourage you to advocate your citizens, engage the city staff through the front door, just like everybody else takes that opportunity. However, if they call and make a complaint, ask them to use the front door and say, I'll follow up on it for you. Or let me know if it doesn't get resolved in 72 hours. Because that's allowing your employees, which we're believing is our greatest asset and our department heads, to manage all complaints, concerns, and problems in the same standard workflow. We all know that if a council member calls a department head with a problem, whatever priority that minute was is now that. We can appreciate that. And if that's a disruption of the daily operations or efficiencies of government, then that would be a problem. So I would advocate to you to encourage your citizens to utilize the front door of city hall or whatever department that is, but promise to follow up on it. And I think a department head could do that.
I appreciate that answer. At the end of our city council meetings, we have citizen concerns.
Yes.
Ones that come to the podium and will have a really valid either complaint or question or some comment that they make. And I think we do a pretty good job of directing that citizen to the, to the right department.
That's believing in your employees.
Yeah. And if we, and if we're not sure about it, we simply ask Mike Colette, who's the interim city manager, to get the name and number and follow, follow up with that person. But I like your idea of following up with that person to see if it, if it's been done within 72 hours or what.
Or a reasonable amount of time, of course.
Because, because I think sometimes they expect us to actually do magic and.
I've often said I can handle things a lot better between eight and four Monday through Friday than I can at seven o'clock on a Monday night. If you give us a chance during the working day, it's probably going to get resolved much quicker than you holding that complaint. Maybe you received it last week, you bring it to council, you make comment, or you talk to a department head, it's inefficient. Encourage them to contact that department, move it through the correct channels and follow up with them would be my advice. Thank you.
Are any of your employees at the, at Winterset unionized?
Yes.
How many unions?
We have one union.
So you've negotiated the one union contract?
Sure did. Perfectly.
Okay.
Perfectly. I've been a member of two other unions in my employment time, but only negotiated with one.
Okay. Well, sometimes without that experience, unions are not always.
They were nice to me today.
All right.
Matthew. So you've spent some time in Sioux City. You've got some experience in Sioux City. What do you think are, are, we've got, we've got a broad range of things that we offer here. What do you think are our most important assets? And what do you think might be one of our challenging liabilities?
I think there might be one in the same. Your asset is you are a beacon of economic prosperity, housing, amenities, professional city services, if I were to quote you, in northwest Iowa. And you're also competing with yourself. You, a desire, there's no like Sioux City next door, right? We don't talk about those other states. But you don't have a metropolitan complex where you have like-sized cities competing for the same residents and businesses, right? You have a 85,000-person city that is an hour from like amenities in either direction. And so your desire is to grow under your own organic weight. If you had another city that was lifting in one area, you could respond to said area and offer the same amenity, investment, whatever it is. You're competing with yourself. You're having to lift all boats to rise the, you know, the, rising tide lifts all boats. And whatever that silver bullet is, we don't know. But we talked about housing, we talked about in city staff, we'll certainly get to budgets and things like that. But where the council sets their priority and focus for the department directors to carry out will determine the strengths and weaknesses of this community. We all know that as an elected body.
Please describe any experience, oh, yeah, that you've had planning and implementing growth in a downtown area.
Well, I got to inherit the end of a facade project, so that was well-received by our downtown commercial district. Following that facade project, there was a seven-year moratorium on all buildings. Obviously, we don't want to do work and then tear it down. So that occurred. And before that expired, we implemented a facade, building materials, and downtown standards. So retaining and preserving historic structures that were privy to a partial contribution of government money was the priority. And so that was kind of a three-step process. But that would be the downtown commercial. You asked a question earlier that I'm going to go back to relative to down, or housing, workforce housing, and this kind of curtails into this question. Approximately one block off at the historic downtown city square in Winterset, a developer approached the city of Winterset about five, six years ago and renovated an old 1909 high school into 27 livable units. Thirteen layers of funding, won countless awards, and the city brought, partnered with that with a partial TIF contribution and LMI funds, and it was one of 13 layers. I don't have an exact quote, but I believe within 60 to 75 days, all units were rented.
Oh, I believe that.
Yep.
What's the name of the?
Winterset Lofts is the, the project. And the developer was Kieran Hatch-Galloway. KHG, I believe, is their acronym.
Happened here.
Well, and it's been modeled.
Several schools that have been.
I could make that connection.
So I, I can commend you and appreciate especially your desire to initially establish trust with those you're working with. And I really believe in empowering those around you, those at the director level at all levels, you know, whether it's the front door, like you said, or otherwise, to empower them to be able to do their job effectively and efficiently. But what I would wonder and push you is, if we assembled a group of some of your current or past subordinates, you know, how would they describe you as a manager or a leader? And if we pressed them about things that could be improved, what would they probably highlight in that regard?
Well, it, it doesn't take long for me to think of that. What I know is not everybody shares the same passion, drive, and desire as I. And that's the weakness of my, because I have a very firm belief in what you don't leave for tomorrow, what you can complete today. This, this chosen path of mine in city management is what truly fills my cup. And I realize that some people just have a job. And there's a, there's an absence of passion and not everybody shares my passion for the work that we do. And so that would be my weakness because I am sometimes ignorant to the fact that people just want to come to work and go home or aren't as excited about the potential or the budding project. And, and my, my over enthusiasm extends into overworked and fast-paced and can we slow down? So that would be my weakness because when I believe in a project or a product, I'm, I'm both feet in and I go for it. And not, some people are a little more timid to get in the pool, if you will. So I know that's a weakness of mine is the pace of work and my enthusiasm towards something. And also knowing, you know, self-awareness, being prepared and professional and competent in the subject matter expertise that you're talking about is a huge priority of mine and, and can be, can land, not be well-received when I don't receive that. Unprepared and unprofessional is, is not a positive response for me.
And I appreciate the transparency.
I'm going to go to question 24, Drew. Please share with us what strategies you would employ to ensure that the municipal workforce mirrors the diversity in our community.
Well, mirroring diversity in our community is, is a desire of all council and every city. I think back to the state law that recently changed gender balanced boards, if we remember that time. And so I think the opportunity needs to be applied, but the obligation cannot be met by the city, if that makes sense. You market and advertise to all backgrounds and encourage application of all persons. But I also believe in employing the, the best possible person for that job. And so that would be my model would be to ensure that all diversities of our community are aware of the opportunity and encourage application regardless of their demographic or, or statement.
I think that would be the, I, I think you answered that very well because to encourage them, there are a lot of ways you could encourage. I can't think.
Certainly. I sit here before you as a 20-year veteran and you see ads all the time, veterans and minorities and women encouraged to apply, you know? And, and that's wonderful. I don't, I can't tell you that I took action because somebody asked me to do that. It took some self-desire to make that application. But if you were reserved and didn't know if you'd get a, a fair shake based on whatever reservation you had and you advertised that they would, as well put it on.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Add one and now I don't. Hang on. And what's your method to keep city council members, this 13, informed on policy and operational matters?
I'd look at how you've been modeled before. I would certainly want to know how, what you prefer. Each person up here has a different communication preference. Might be by face-to-face, it might be a phone call, it might be a text message, it might be an email. But one thing I will promise, that all council and elected body will have the information at the same time. So if it comes by email, that's the way I have to do it. That's the way I have to do it. I think back to my past with elected officials and think of some persons that prefer a text message because their, their job is busy and they're unable to sit down for a 20-minute call where another person would rather stop into my office. And so to answer your question more clearly, Mr. Mayor, if it was relative to important operations and timely communication, I think you would have to go by email. So all persons were informed at the same time. However, if you wanted a weekly sit-down and just to catch up and you wanted to darken my door or take a phone call or have lunch, I'm open to those options as well. And again, I'm willing to communicate in all modalities. But when it comes to policy updates, provisions, that would be via email to ensure everybody receives it at the same time in the same way.
I have a weekly meeting, so go ahead.
So the job as city manager, you're, you're on pretty much 24 seconds. How, how do you de-stress? How do you manage stress levels with that? How do you step away?
That's a fair question. Because I think, you know, they say it's lonely at the top and it can be. And so I would tell you that first and foremost, I have a very strong network of other like city managers that are wonderful sounding boards and able to vent to, and they understand whatever that frustration is. But when it comes to rest and revitalization to be the best you on the next day, you know, of course, I explain to you my kiddos and their, the reason we get up every day. So, or if I'm not coaching a game or two. So, you know, my kids bring me that opportunity, but also I love a good game of golf. Four hours, 18 holes, that's a blessing. And, and I'll tell you that sometimes I balance my days even during my work schedule. When I know that there is a tough conversation or a very detailed, in-depth conversation, I'm not going to stack up eight hours of meetings in front of that. I want to show up to the best of, as I can. I might block my two hours before that to be prepared, as I mentioned, competent and focused on that, which helps resolve a lot of that stress because when you're confident, the conversation's easy and ultimately less stressful.
I want to expand before I go to my official question. Councilman Moore asked if you had a preference of how you wished that we communicate with your department heads. And I think another layer to that maybe that he was wondering about is, do you want to be CC'd on all these emails?
No. Because I would, I would expect.
I know it depends on importance from what you've said, you know, what is it relevant to?
Yeah.
But just want to know, like, your level of management, micromanagement, whatever you want to call it.
Well, I, since you said it, I'll, I'll share it. I believe micromanagement is a sign of poor leadership. You can write that down.
What was that?
I believe micromanagement is a sign of poor leadership. I do not desire to manage everybody else's schedule along with my own or their work practices. So situational awareness and a CC, hey, thanks, got it, delete. I think it's pertinent if it becomes a point of disagreement or needing a, a face-to-face facilitated discussion, right? Again, if the conversation is relative to gathering more information already presented to the other members of the governing body because you have an active interest in it, or you're asking on behalf of a citizen, we've already talked that piece. If it becomes impass or you have a disagreement rather than just education and information, I think I would, at that point, expect that. And I think if we reverse the question, council member, would you expect the department heads to communicate directly to you without courtesy copying me?
Well, if I was contacting them first, I have no problem going to the department head without CCing you.
Mm-hmm.
I would trust that you have already got the communication with your department.
I would hope as well.
When they reply, if they feel it's necessary to CC you. So I would reverse that on you again.
Yeah, you want to, you would want to know about things that might start bubbling up and cause an issue, but two persons having a professional conversation about gathering more information is no concern of mine. Is that, I mean, there's a balance there.
It makes perfect sense to me. I just, I, I think that was part of maybe the question that, and I'm assuming.
Yep.
That Mr. Moore was kind of alluding to in those layers of his question. Now, back to my question. Who has been most influential to you in your life? And it doesn't necessarily have to be only career-oriented, but it could be, and why?
Wow.
Did they ask you that five times today?
No. No, that's the first one.
Hey, there we go.
The most influential person in my life? I think.
No, it's not John Wayne?
No. Fair.
Buying you some time.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay calculated because right now there's, there's a list of people that have impacted my life, but I can't say, I, I would, it's a point of pride for myself that I've never asked for a handout or asked for anybody's favor and I've competed on the plane, or same playing field as everybody else to get. And so for me to arrogantly say that nobody has assisted me or impacted my life would be a lie. But I pride myself on the fact that I competed on the same field as everybody else with a fair chance. And I'm proud of where I am today and I'm proud to be sitting here today.
And has someone influenced that thought process?
I would tell you the reason I'm a city administrator is because our police chief, Ken Burke, who lost a battle to cancer a year after I was hired. And I was acting as an emergency manager and happy as, as could be. I'd reached the next pinnacle of my professional career. And when the current city administrator departed, sent a farewell letter, which was nice and well-received, and Ken said, well, Drew, what are you going to do? And I said, what are you talking about? I'm going to go back to work. And he said, you have an MPA. And he said, "You have an MPA. You can do this." And so if I were to pick one person, respective to my personal career in this position, Ken Burke challenged me to be a city administrator, which is ultimately a legacy because he never got to retire out of his professional and public service. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Drew, I can tell from the questions that you're a driven individual and that you have expectations, which I appreciate. And I probably, similar to you, similarly to you, am pretty high-energy and like to remain focused and seek action and expedite that action and sometimes get frustrated when things take a little longer than I think they should. But I do also want to understand that there's a balance with that. And I think that for me, you know, there's a balance of getting people on board, right? If you want to go somewhere fast, you go alone. If you want to go far, you go with others. And so I would ask, I asked earlier about your leadership style and philosophy, but I would take it a step further with question 25 that focuses on more, I think the fact that the city of Sioux City and our past administrators and everything I do as a council member tries to create and maintain a healthy and positive workplace culture. And I'd really ask you what you've done in your current or prior position to promote that type of culture in the workplace. And I think especially in light of how driven you are and your expectations and having individuals come prepared and incompetent and ready to speak to a topic. Because I think at times, I mean, in my personal and professional career, I can say that sometimes that's a balance in itself.
Well, thank you for that question. The question just begs another thought that ruminates in my head rent-free, and that is, expectations will never be met if not communicated.
For sure.
If I have an expectation of an employee and I didn't communicate that to them, you're setting them up for failure. However, once that expectation is communicated, do they have the tools, equipment, training, competence and experience to carry that out? And those are all individual levels and, again, getting to know your people and your To ensure that, you know, you, you mentioned competency and professionalism and preparedness, those are all pet peeves of mine. Yeah. And you do a, a dry run of the budget presentation before the council receives it? Sure. Absolutely. Until it becomes exhaustive and we've, we've done it enough times that there's trust built, that it's not required anymore. So depending on the given circumstance, I would ask, again, getting back to that leadership style and culture, you have to express what you expect and not do that in an annual review. I'm a firm believer that annual review should be a positive opportunity for the employee and not an opportunity for discipline or reprimand. That should have been handled months ago before we got here. So if there's a failure to meet a certain standard, that would be communicated as soon as possible with a remedy in place. And not in a negative way. That's mentorship, that's coaching, that's guiding and shepherding your employees. It's not that you did right or wrong, like this is some kind of judge and jury, but if you didn't meet the expectation, that I clearly didn't communicate well enough to you, then I need to mentor and coach and motivate and shepherd you to where I want you to be. And that's totally different conversation than carrot and stick.
Gotcha. So just to clarify then, thinking about how you would establish or maintain that healthy and positive culture is more focused on, at least if you set that expectation, people know what they're expecting, or what you're expecting or what you're looking for. And therefore, as long as they're able to meet that benchmark, of course, it's a, it's a good place that you want to be in.
Well, I can prove it's attainable if I'm going to demonstrate it, so-
Yeah, yeah. No, I just wanted to check in. Thank you.
Okay, Drew, I have, I'm going to expand on question 26. How have you worked with developers or business leaders to overcome barriers to growth? And how would you build those relationships here? What I've run into developers and business leaders, mainly developers, it's, it's at the front end of the project. The plan, plans examiner is very difficult. The engineer's very difficult. Planning zoning's very difficult. How do you deal with that? Because for the most part, from what I can see, they're following the ordinances we've passed, or that the state law is. And I sometimes think to myself, and I've said out loud once, well, maybe we ought to change the ordinances if they're that difficult. But we have a, we have, there's a bottleneck there and, and we haven't been able to solve it yet. I'm not sure how to solve it. I want to know what your experiences are so you could help us be more workable, I guess, with the developer.
So, obviously not knowing the details or the process and procedure relative to plans and specs and review and permitting. Government efficiency at its best is what comes to mind, right? There's managing expectations. There's an expectation from a developer for planned site reviews in a timely manner. And I think it comes back to setting the expectation of a timely deliverable with consideration to accommodate staff time to complete it. I gave you the example earlier about communicating with staff and you said, I just arbitrarily said 72 hours. Why wouldn't we ask that, hey, we reserve 72, 96 hours to review these plans and we'll give you an update or ask where? You're setting an expectation. You're holding yourself to a standard and say, "Give me four days to look at these. I'm a little backed up. Give myself four days to look at these. If you haven't heard anything by Thursday, give me a call on Friday." I think that you can start right there by managing those expectations with your clients, the developers, and protecting your city staff's time with a reasonable deliverable expectation. That's what I would ask. Is there a deliverable expectation that plans need to be reviewed and returned to the developer? Yes or no? And if not, I would set a standard that we both can agree to, my first step.
Have you had any experiences in your profession where it has been an issue? And it's not just plans, plans inspection, just all the upfront before they can actually start building?
Yes, absolutely.
But have you, have you run into-
I have, absolutely. I'll hark back to the 27 unit building, 13 layers of funding, historic preservation and workforce housing tax credits, the amount of paperwork that went into that building. And I had a great team at the lead and that developer was taking the charge. We did our obligatory portion of reviewing plans and specs. It was over 36 months trying to gather the funds, so we had ample time to get our permit reviewed. But have also heard from just simple trade permits, people expect they drop off a plumbing permit to put a new bathtub in, that it's going to be returned in 12 minutes. And that's not a realistic expectation. So stating at a minimum 24 hours and you return it in 12 hours, they're tickled pink. But if you express, "I reserve one day to review this, but I give it back to you the same day," you've made a positive climate rather than a negative one that had a false expectation of, "You guys aren't doing anything up there. Why can't you just review this plan and send it back?"
And the ti, and let me expand on that. It's not just the timing of it, it's, it's getting, it's getting it back from the city hall and it's not acceptable to the developer because there, there are just too many requirements. There are too many-
Well, I would challenge that-
... orpens that have to be, whether it's a fire code or-
Yeah. I would challenge that code is written for a reason. And if you were to propose change to a code, especially to life safety and building construction, it would take a very deep dive. And, and I would be leaning on the city attorney in that angle because those codes specifically are preservation of personal property and life safety. And so regardless, if the international building code or the international plumbing or fire code or what other examples have made it a laborious checklist to review, that's just dirty work that the planning department has to do to review it. And, and we need to explain that to them. But I, I don't know if I, again, you asked if I would advocate for something that could be detrimental. I would not advise a holistic removal or a reduction of an ordinance that's in place for life safety and property protection.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. But sounds like there's an opportunity to manage some joint expectations there.
17, what's your experience with strategic planning? Do you believe this type of planning is important for a community?
Yes, I do. My examples would be not only in my current position, but going back to the state of Iowa and the military at large. Strategic planning can be large or small scale. Most commonly, they're five to 10-year strategic plans. I'm aware this one is running out at the end of the year and you've delayed until a city manager's onboard to review it. I had a wonderful conversation with the city manager's staff about all the, all the information that's piled up and ready to be used for the strategic plan, so, yes-
How long is yours, how long is your strategic plan in Winterset now? When's it expire?
It's a, right now we have a comprehensive plan and we have a five-year look at it, so it's not coined a, a five-year strategic plan, but we'll be looking at it coming up here in August, actually. Be two and a half years of experience there. So five-year plans are wonderful until something like House File 718 shows up or the DOT decides they're going to do something different. But one thing I think is the most valuable, and this is another phrase I've used, which is, planning is everything, plans are nothing. Because you have to get everybody in the room to have a quality strategic plan so everybody understands what the vision and direction is. If you never get to that fourth step on the strategic plan because some outlying unobserved thing occurred, so be it. You got the first three done and you got a whole bunch of people in the room to discuss what the vision was and we were unified when we started. So plans are everything, or planning is everything, plans are nothing. And, and I think that they have value. Do I think that anybody that's ever done a strategic plan has 100% success rate at the end of the five or 10-year period? I would challenge and say no. But I would say that a large majority of people that engage in strategic planning have a unified front and a very strong momentum moving in the same direction.
So if selected to become the next city administrat, this is number seven, to become the next city administrator, how would you seek to integrate yourself into the community? And what would be your strategies to become and remain visible and approachable by all members of the community?
Well, I have an obligation to be available and visible in the, so professionally and personally are two different conversations as well. So professionally, obviously, I'll have my 90-day introduction, right? And I'll meet as many people as I can and I'll understand as much as I can. But going forward, attendance at pertinent and valuable meetings is, is one thing, right? Chamber, Rotary, community, organizational groups. But also privately, I told you, I will most likely be on a baseball field, a football field, a wrestling mat, or on a golf course or soccer field any given Saturday, which is something that is a blessing. Also, I'm a member of the community, so I don't know how much more visible you can get, much like yourselves, as you're walking the same aisles of the same Hy-Vee, buying the same bread. And so this is a conversation that occurs in every city manager's conversation. There comes a point where city managers too, 24/7 as you mentioned, sir, do just want to buy bread and go home. And, and you just don't want to be a council member, you just want to buy bread and go home. And so there's that balance in there. But active participation in civic organizations and groups, being present for events and community events, of course, and, and also having reverence and appreciation for a little bit of recluse-ness and a little bit of private time to regroup and recharge. So it's a balance.
I'm on number eight.
Okay. Thank you.
During your career in local government, how have you remained abreast of new practices and emerging trends in municipal government? And, you know, how, how, what's your favorite go-to to keep yourself up to date with all things related to your title?
Well, following grad school, pretty much everybody puts those books back on the shelf and it becomes network-based. So I'm active and viable in the Iowa City Managers Association. There's two conferences annually every year. As you know, there's an Iowa League of Conference coming up here in September and there's a National City Managers Conference. There's also a plethora of national and regional LinkedIn groups and organizations that not only Iowa city managers, but others are, are utilizing. The Iowa League of Cities utilizes a SharePoint email system called Grapevine. And so particular issues, maybe not by your community, but others populate there by a question or concern from another city manager. So based on those three, whether it's networking at conferences or strong network and affiliation with the City Managers Association, both at the state and regional level, or lastly, social media and LinkedIn, those would be the three ways I stay abreast of those.
Well, in this council, I believe you all are respectful of the Iowa League of Cities.
Good.
Just wish we had more poll when it comes to things like House File 718 and things like that.
Don't, don't make me comment.
Yeah, no kidding. Yeah. Um, well, and I think you, I mean, I think we've touched on a lot of different things, right? And I think, I think you've answered this question somewhat, but I'll allow you an opportunity to elaborate. I think you talked about it most when we were discussing, you know, something happening in an annual review versus when it happens in real time. But share with us a situation in the past where maybe a direct report, this is number 18, where a direct report was consistently underperforming and how you addressed that situation, explained your approach to maybe holding that employee accountable for their job performance and their behavior in the workplace and kind of redirecting that.
Certainly. Well, that's a fair question. And I'll tell you this, if there's different standards for different employees, you're going to have a mess on your hands. Cancer can, can grow and fester into departments and ruin a culture overnight. So the first thing is, again, setting clear expectations and measurable results. And we all are familiar with a performance improvement plan where failure is acknowledged and a improvement plan is set forth. And, and a lot of times your hands are tied by HR policy and handbooks and union practices. So I would say, I was more attuned to ensuring we are compliant with the procedures set forth in the handbook or in the union contract rather than have difficult conversation because at that point, it's just objective, right? These are the facts, this is what occurred and this is what I need you to do and this is how we're going to get there. So I try not to, but I also try and understand and try and discern how we got to that situation before we get there. So I would say, I would first have a conversation and bring it to an employee's attention and discuss concerns. And there might be outlying things that are external from, from work, home life, other things that are occurring that really they need your support rather than discipline at that point and have those conversations.
We're done with our questions. Now you get the opportunity to ask us some that you would like.
Did you hear me say that? I go, oh, boy.
After that, our high-paid consultant will ask you questions from our citizens.
Well, my question, and it's not directed to any person, but at, at large, you asked me the question relative to budgets and operations, so I'm going to ask it back. Mark brought you a slew of applicants to be interviewed in person and considered for this opportunity, which, again, I'm appreciative and humbled to be considered for. But what is it about me that brought me to Sioux City today based on your decisions?
All right. I'm going to start with this one. So one, one thing that I, I think was very unique about you that, that I found very interesting was your experience, number one, working with state government, which is something that we, we struggle to keep our head above water. I'm going to be frank with you. A lot of times we are, we are kind of seen as the redheaded stepchild of Iowa. We're forgotten about on the, on the west side of the state. And so getting our, our cohorts from the state to pay recognition or time, or just to work with us sometimes can be, can be a battle, a big battle. That was, that was one thing that, that you have experience with that I felt was valuable. The other thing, and I'm going to kind of turn this back on you because I was hoping that you'd speak on it a little bit, is your experience with emergency preparedness. So I am from the west side, I'm a Sioux City lifer, and this last year, we- So I am from the west side, I'm a Sioux City lifer, and this last year, we had a tremendous flood event happen. And we continue to work diligently to make sure that our citizens are safe and that our infrastructure is up to date, that we have an appropriate levy to prevent another flooding event from happening. But when it happened, it was a scramble. It hadn't happened in a number of years, and in an event of that impact, we, you know, we had to learn to work with the county in a very short span of time and utilize their emergency coordinator to help us kind of find what to do. So if I can flip it back on you, could you just speak to some of your experience in that position and how you think that would be beneficial in an event like that?
Absolutely. So I had five years of emergency preparedness time, three with the state, two with the county. My state time was predominantly with the public health, so hospitals, EMS and public health in the name of disaster response, preparedness and recovery. My job there was specifically the training and exercise preparedness coordinator. So when you ask about training and preparing for a catastrophic event, you're speaking right to me. So how do you train? You got to start with a desire to do so. If it's not mandated or obligated, it's hard to get people to the table, right? The state sets forth requirements and minimums for emergency management coordinators at counties to meet a full-scale exercise and tabletop requirements, et cetera. So it sounds like the conversation needs to start with Berry County Emergency Management, introduce myself, and bring along a couple department heads that might be a part of the next flooding event. That would be my first step.
You have a very coordinated effort in that part.
Yeah, okay, good.
Couldn't anticipate 20 inches, 28 inches of rain 40 miles up the road is the biggest problem. Now, we've made some mistakes that need to be addressed. That's one thing about a disaster, unfortunately, is you learn what your weakness is. That's the ultimate training, unfortunately, but we have, we have all of our, not all of ours, but we have many department heads, planning heads, police chief, fire chief, all a part of that.
That's awesome.
Integrated plan. But that doesn't mean that we're going to respond the way that we would all like us to, unfortunately.
You know, Drew, I'll respond to your question as well of why I urged your consideration and was excited for you to be here is I think, and Matthew touched on a part of this, I think that your experience in the state of Iowa is also good. You understand the landscape and what we're dealing with at city levels, because I think it's been extraordinary and unique, and not every state is created equal. And the support that state governments give cities and municipalities is not always equal either. And I think that you understanding that landscape is an advantage and a good thing. And secondly, I mean, although I don't think you have expansive experience in large cities or, you know, comparable size, I look to your over 20-years experience in the military. And I understand that you know exactly what it means to lead the ship of a large organization, even if it hasn't been a city necessarily at this point, of something of this size, but that doesn't mean that you're scared of directing something of this size and ready for that opportunity because you've been ready to do that and stepped up to that opportunity for the 20 years in military service. So I appreciate, appreciated that very much and think that, think that you definitely are a strong candidate.
I thought you had a very impressive resume, and I worked closely with the recruiting consultant in getting this narrowed down to workable three candidates that we've had, which all have been very good. So I went by the resume. I like these interviews though, because you can meet us and we can meet you and we can have a, we can have a conversation about what our positions are. And you did a good job of showing bandwidth many things.
Thank you.
I'll join in and say, you checked the boxes for me. You have a really diverse employment background that we were able to pull, you know, and read the details from your resume. I don't think we're allowed to mention those, but from city administrators to student sergeant, emergency medical director, technical instructor, and those are really some good traits for you to use as the city manager here. And, you know, it doesn't bother me so much, remind me of your population?
Fifty-three, fifty-three.
Good year, too.
Fifty-three, I mean.
I wasn't born yet. I made that clear.
Even I can't help myself.
I think that can be a positive in that a city of that size, you could have your finger on the pulse for a little longer on some of the topics and as you grow and learn your career in those fields, to be able to apply them to a larger city like ours. Because obviously, you're going to have a lot of staff. So I, I think it's going to be a positive for you to have manage a smaller city.
How many, please, Janelle?
Eight hundred, Katie.
Eight hundred?
Eighty.
Eighty?
You need to know their names by the end of the first ninety minutes.
I was fearful there was a quiz at the end.
Yeah.
Like, just a picture quiz, and you have to fill in everybody's name.
You have to spell my last name, too.
I need you to say it in a sentence.
Well, I guess I'll, I'll tell you my part in this and our high-priced consultant and our, I was very disengaged in the process and they told us four names to start, and I said, that sounds good to me and we're going to go with them. So I'm, I can't say that anything, any one candidate stood out to me, but I was, I've been through this a lot of times and I don't like the process. I'll just leave it.
Understood.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, Drew, we've set aside some time for committee questions and answers, and the members of the public here in Sioux City have been given the opportunity to submit questions in advance online, as well as those that have attended the interviews have also been given the opportunity to submit questions. So I'm going to read through questions randomly. We won't get through all of them because there's a lot of questions, but we'll try to get through as many as possible in 30 minutes. And I'll try to avoid questions that you've already answered as part of the interview with the mayor and council, okay?
Okay.
All right. The first question is, are you really interested in this job or are you simply unhappy in your current position?
I couldn't be further from the truth. I'm pleased and grateful for where I am right now. As I explained early in my conversation, the desire was to seek the opportunity that aligned with my professional and personal goals, but I'm not leaving a troubled situation. Rather, I would say it's just the opposite. My confidence and abilities that I've demonstrated down there gave me the encouragement to apply here.
Thank you. Number two, what motivates you?
That's a good question. What motivates me? I think what I, I don't want to be overly exaggerative here. I wake up every day and we go to work to serve our families and our communities and the people around us, and that sounds a little sappy, but every day, as parents, we all work to live. We don't live to work, and the best person that I can be as a parent, and that parent is to provide and care for their children. And so that's what motivates me every day.
Okay. How would you balance economic development and still maintain the character of the city?
That's a, that's a tight rope there. Historic preservation is near and dear to my heart. I explained a little bit in some of my questions and responses to council. Historic preservation is the opportunity to breathe life into an old building while retaining its history. And so I think they can be one in the same. I had a wonderful tour with Marty today, as other applicants did, and I think his quote was, we're running out of old buildings because we breathe so much life into them, so that's applaudable. But that doesn't have to be buildings, it's sites, it's significant events and locations. So it sounds like Sioux City's done a fine job of economic development with preservation of history relative to buildings.
Okay, thank you. How would you improve transparency and accountability in city government?
Transparency and accountability? Well, I've spoke a lot about clear expectations and measured results. I think I'd have to ask the question because in preparation for this interview, as I perused the Sioux City website, I couldn't help but realize how much information is on that website, far exceeding so many other municipalities. I personally applauded the finance director on the citizen guide to property taxes. That's a three-sided scale with a large amount of information that's at an elementary level. And that is amazing because that is a very dynamic thing to explain to the layperson. And so I'd have to have an example as to what needed to be more transparent or explained, I think. Because I think right now, it's a pretty available and interpretable information on that website.
Great, thank you. What techniques do you use to engage diverse populations, especially those that are underserved?
Well, you have to meet people where they're at. People don't come to city council in open meetings. We have to be in the community.
We had more yesterday.
And we're streaming live.
We must have really bored him.
It's Friday.
At 4:30 on a Friday.
Right afternoon.
I say that tongue-in-cheek, but the reality is, you have to meet the people where they are. Every person that's elected up there didn't win by coming to city council meetings on Monday nights. You came, you won your votes by attending community and neighborhood events, being visible in the population. And so, so too is how you meet your population, is being where they are, not where you are.
Can you share an example from your previous roles where you successfully partnered with this local school district to improve outcomes for youth and families?
I would say it was a low-hanging fruit, but the opportunity, and again, another desire of the late Ken Burke, was to engage the school resource officer program, which is blown into a wonderful thing, well-received by both the city and the school district. And frankly, it's a little, it's about a decade behind, so it wasn't a hard thing to strategize, but it was finally implemented last year, and I think that's a one positive thing that's occurred.
Okay. Would you be willing to accept a 50% pay cut if it was put to a ballot initiative?
No.
Describe a crisis you managed as city manager and how you led through it.
Say that again?
Describe a crisis that you managed as a city manager and how you led through that crisis.
Well, I think my previous conversation and expertise in emergency management and city management, large-scale would be COVID. Secondary would be eastern and western Iowa flooding in 2019. We also, I've also responded to, most recently, we just had a large rainfall event. Approximately 40 to 50 homes in our small community have water inundated basements, and I was dealing with that until about 5:00 PM last night before I came up here. So it might be a large scale to our community, but might be a small scale to Sioux City. But I am very confident in my abilities to support emergency responders in a catastrophe, catastrophic event.
Okay, thank you. Next question, how do you manage conflict?
I don't, I'm not very good about passively ignoring personality decisions. And I also believe that we have a responsibility to grow up and move on past some things. Sometimes deeply-held resentment or past practices can prevent future potential. And so if there's an issue, oftentimes, it's not emotionally-based, it was objective in the reasoning. So I prefer to have the tough conversation early and move past it rather than allow it to fester and cause erosion of a relationship.
What are your thoughts about attempting to attract small business as part of an economic development strategy?
Small business is the lifeblood of America. There's many opportunities with the downtown renovations and restorations of the first floor of many buildings, as Marty was sharing me today. I don't imagine large commercial outfits would fill those voids. And I think it comes down to support with your Chamber of Commerce and looking for small business loans. I understand they're a burden at best to support there, but I think you find the opportunity and you make it achievable for a small business. That would be the first step a city could take.
Next, how do you build a strong team across city departments?
I think I've addressed this pretty well, but how do you create a strong team? Again, it comes back to relationships, culture, and true appreciation for their work and putting it more than just, you know, whether that's a community or a city employee appreciation day, is that discussions with the union on tenure increases and supporting their dreams and desires as they continue to serve the city. So promotion potential, training, education.
Okay, thank you. In your previous or current position, how and who managed weed control on city property? And how successful were you in controlling weeds?
It can be a hot-button issue, Drew, I tell you.
I appreciate the intensity of the question.
Unintended, cutting-edge.
So, so truth be told, the street department managed the weeds on the city property in the street. City parking and right-of-way, of course, is a responsibility of the citizen, as documented by code and was enforced by code enforcement. But proudly, I sprayed my own weeds in my own gutter at my house, so.
All right. Have you figured out a cure for homelessness? If not a cure, then what methods of dealing with this problem have you tried with some success?
Well, that conversation's been held before this meeting with other meetings I've had, and I don't think there's one simple answer to homelessness. It's a dynamic problem, and as I advised, I believe, in the department head meeting, homelessness is the cause and effect of multiple things, and so one answer is not going to be sufficient. But what I wouldn't advise Sioux City to do is start trying things without investigation or research. Homelessness is not new to the east and west coasts and the south. And so collaboration and understanding of what has and has not worked in those regions or areas and applying that would be my advocacy to make sure that we're implementing a plan or a practice that has proven results rather than just trying our best, if you will.
Mayor, I think all of the other questions we've addressed during the other Q and A and the council, so that's all I have.
Well, Drew, thank you for coming. We appreciate your time, and we'll be making a decision shortly, so thank you for being here. For those that are citizens, these are not easy decisions to make, and so I guess, to speak personally for myself, I would welcome input, call or email or text me because this position will probably last longer than I will, so I want to make sure that the city's in good hands. So with that, I move we adjourn.
Second?
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Thanks, Drew.
Thank you.